I call the meeting to order. Welcome to our June 9, 2016 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I'm Mayor John Lewis and on behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, thank you for coming. We will begin with Councilmember Victor Peterson introducing one of our great citizens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and we invite those in council chambers to please arise.
Mayor, tonight we have Lane Norton helping us start the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you so much for your help, Lane.
As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Thor Strandhold of the Valer Christian Church. Pastor Thor, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and all these bright, happy, smiling faces here tonight. Hallelujah. Well, you know, the Bible says in Psalms 33:11 that "the counsel of the Lord stands forever." Proverbs 11:14 says that "where there is no counsel, the people fall; but in the multitude of counselors there is safety." I believe that our city council has the wisdom to help guide us and direct us to the next level of success in this community. Hallelujah. So Father, we thank you, Lord, tonight, that as we gather together in one mind and in one accord, you give us wisdom, knowledge, guidance, and direction for all the decisions that have to be made here tonight. And Lord, we'll be careful to give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory for it. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. And amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thor. Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Aquarium is present.
Thank you. Agenda item number one, we have our pillars of character against that wall. And tonight, Councilmember Ray will give us the overview of the pillar of the month, citizenship.
This month's highlighted pillar, as you said, Mayor, is citizenship. As council members and town staff, we are committed to helping the community be a better place to live and work by sharing resources to serve others, following all laws and regulations, and protecting the environment.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I have a proclamation for Advocates for Individuals with Disabilities Day. Oh, I do have some people here. Come on down and join me right here in the front, please. I'll go ahead and just read a couple of statements from the proclamation and then I'll have you introduce yourselves, okay? So this evening, whereas advocates for individuals with disabilities and aid.org foundation bring awareness of Americans with Disabilities Act ADA through education, compliance, and generous giving, excuse me, and whereas nearly one in five people have a disability in the U.S., making up the largest minority group in the country, whereas 28% of those with disabilities fall below the poverty line, adult ages 21 to 64 with disabilities had median monthly earnings that are $763 less compared to those with no disability, whereas local, regional, state, and federal agencies along with businesses and the private sector are working with aid.org to improve the quality of life of persons living with a disability, and whereas increased education, compliance, and kindness is needed to create civil rights for the largest minority group in the U.S. and end discrimination against those with disability, and now therefore, our mayor, John W. Lewis, Mayor of Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim June 9, 2016, as Advocates for Individuals with Disabilities Day. And I'll have you just introduce yourselves and give us a little bit about why you're here.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Rogers. I'm the executive director of aid.org. And we're really here today to thank the Town of Gilbert for recognizing this day and recognizing that there is a huge underserved minority that is out there in our country. We would like to help anyone receive assistance where there's that insurance gap, where there's medical necessity, and then there's life necessity. And we understand that there's a life necessity with people with disabilities that is underserved. Please go to aid.org and request assistance, and we are happy to provide those gifts to you. And if you are a business owner, please understand that there is an ADA compliance that's out there. It's 26 years old, and we encourage you to look at those standards and really follow through. And thank you for having us in the Town of Gilbert. And this is also, this is Emily Branch.
I am the chief compliance coordinator for Advocates for Individuals with Disabilities. Thank you, and thank you for being here. We'll have a photo now with the mayor, if we could. Yep, there we go. Hold your proclamation. There we go. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Well, tonight, we have a very, very special recognition that we like to honor one of our own home favorite teams. If I can have the Gilbert boys, the lacrosse Tiger High School team come up front with their coaching staff. Well, it sounds like, well, okay, I understand. Well, what I learned is that there was a championship game that came down to an overtime play, and these fine young men was able to win in overtime. Where's your coach? Coach, come over here. All right, coaches, come over here. Why don't you share us your name and tell us a little bit more about what happened in this state championship game? Because it sounds like you defeated the last year's champion. Is that correct?
Yeah.
My name is Frank Caramenta. We were, we, the last three games that we played in the playoffs, we lost in the regular season, all three teams. The kids worked really hard and they knew what they had. Everything was on the line and they left it all out there. We were winning by one with about a minute and a half to go, and they got the ball and ended up scoring, taking it in overtime. The faceoff, we, we lost the faceoff at the start of overtime. They had a chance to shoot and score. Sam Jones stripped the ball. We took a timeout, moved the ball up the field, and Gavin Chris scored for the winning goal.
With a round of applause. And Coach, why don't you introduce yourself? And if you have anything you can add to that color, that'd be great.
Adam Wirtz, assistant coach, and I don't know, he said it all.
Well, before, let's do this. I'm gonna pass the mic down, and if you could just say your name and maybe the position you play, that'd be great.
I'm Tyler Woods, and I play midi.
Cameron Wells, and I play midfield.
Cooper Martin, I play midfield.
Ammon Hall, and I play midfield.
I'm Bryce Peterson, I play midfield.
I'm Adam Cobos, I play defense.
I'm Kevin Dunyan, I play defense.
I'm Daniel Arnett, I play attack.
Gavin Chris, I play midfield.
Taylan Perkins, play attack.
I'm midi.
My bad.
Braden Biggs, and I play midfield.
Elijah Owen, I play midfield.
Coleman Owen, I play midfield.
Wolfgang Kasse, and I play defense.
Sam Jones, and I play defense.
Well, let's give a round of applause for these fine men here. I'm going, I'm going to read this certificate of recognition, and you guys can hang it up in your clubhouse as, as a, as appreciation on, on behalf of the town council. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, we extend a very special recognition for winning the Varsity State Championship in the Arizona Lacrosse League with a thrilling overtime win over the two-time defending state champs. We wish to express our pride in the team's accomplishment and our appreciation for the fine publicity the team has brought to our community through their athletic ability and inspired team play. With that, another round of applause. And gentlemen, we're gonna get a picture with the mayor, so if we can all come over here.
I did have a chance to watch the team in action, and that is a very exciting team. And they play well together, and congratulations to them. Next on the agenda, those involved, so I see Robert, Pastor Rolfe, if you can come down, anyone that was involved in our Stanford Macy rebuild project. If you can just come stand to my right. And that includes Councilmember Cook, Councilmember Peterson. Come on down. Let's have the two of you kind of come up right here. We'll do an overview, and then we'll do a video. And then we'll come back and just quick introductions. Last Saturday was a very inspiring Saturday. And yet, this project that's going to be described has been inspiration to our community for quite some time. If the two of you could just maybe identify summary of what happened and who some of these individuals are behind us, then we'll show the video, and then we'll have them introduce themselves. So Robert, mention Town of Gilbert that you're associated with, and then you can kind of introduce. Pastor Rolfe, please.
I'm Robert Croft. I oversee the emergency home repairs program for the Town of Gilbert. This particular project started out as a simple emergency home repair, but it kind of grew into a wonderful partnership with Mission Community Church. I'd like to introduce Pastor Rolfe Traynor, who, with the several members of the team that are behind us, made this all possible.
Good evening. I'll be really quick. We took on a project in partnership with the Town of Gilbert, and it took us 10 months to finish it, where we had to completely tear down a home and rebuild it. And the price tag had about $75,000 on it. Mission set aside $25,000, hoping that we would be able to get a lot of involvement. In a nutshell, we were done in 10 months. We had over $150,000 worth of materials and labor donated. And Mission was out of pocket, $17,000. Just an amazing, amazing project. And some of those donors are behind me, and I wanted to introduce a couple of them. And in particular, Damage Control. We walked into this home, and the roof had been in disrepair for over two years. And so, as the volunteers, we were about to bring 100 volunteers in to tear this house apart, and realized that was unhealthy. And Damage Control found out about it, and within a week, came in and spent a week completely demolishing that home, for which we are very grateful. That gave us the momentum we needed to get started. So many thanks to Damage Control for your work. And then House of Refuge as well, for an organization that gives themselves. They gave a lot to this, this project. And I want to lift them up and thank them for the work that you guys have done. So in a nutshell, we are very grateful to be done with the project. Thank you for your, your support of that. And it is a great pleasure to be here and say we're done.
Cardenia, let's watch this video, which gives a summary, and you'll get, Mrs. Macy became the spokesperson. This was the Macy home, and this was the team that did the rebuild. And maybe before you press the, or the start button, Pastor Rolfe, there was something that Mission Community Church, and as the project lead here, you had the Macy sign. Can you describe what that was and the verbiage?
Yeah, we, in the very beginning, we thought we sort of need to make something legal out of this thing, because we're about to tear someone's house down. And so, we gave them a document. It's just a two-page, as formal as we could make it, saying, hey, do you understand that we're gonna completely demolish your house? We're gonna throw everything in the dumpster, clothing, furniture, plateware, everything, walls, windows, roof, everything goes in the dumpster. And do you trust us to give that back to you? And they signed that document. Huge level of faith on their part.
Kathy Macy never thought she would spend another night in her house, but thanks to a unique partnership, she's stepping foot for the first time into her dream home.
When I first walked in the house this morning, I was like, am I in a hotel room or in a hotel? This is fabulous.
What began as a small roof leak turned into a major project involving the Town of Gilbert, Mission Community Church, more than 55 businesses, and hundreds of volunteers who came together to do much more than a roof repair.
One of the reasons I think that a project like this is so important in the community is the partnerships that are created between the Town of Gilbert and nonprofits or other businesses in general. It gives us, as a partner, a totally different view of the Town of Gilbert, a really good, healthy view of the Town of Gilbert. Not that it wasn't there, but it just really builds some really strong relationships. It shows, from our perspective, the desire of the Town of Gilbert to really make it a beautiful community.
It's just overwhelming. That's all I've got to say. And thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Five, four, three, two, one.
This is Gilbert Digital.
Hi, I'm Mayor John Lewis. Are you sad that this video's over? Subscribe to our YouTube channel, and you'll never be sad again. Ever.
Ever.
Ever. To the team behind me, and if any of you were not able to be there Saturday, certificates were handed out. Melanie in the back has some more certificates for you. But if you could just give us your name and which organization you're part of, please.
Hi, I'm Audrey Heine. I'm with Mission Community Church. I personally want to thank each and every one of you that had a hand in this. You probably got a call, an email, a letter from me bugging you left and right about things that are needed. And over 300 hands touched the project, and I couldn't be more proud of how everyone stepped up in the community and even outside of the community to, to step up where there was a need and fill it. So thank you so much.
I'm Mike Turner, and I'm with Mission Church and House of Refuge. So I'm double blessed.
Bobby Lyles, Director of Facilities at House of Refuge. We're just privileged to be able to give to others besides our own group. We're privileged to help.
I'm Michael King, the President of King Engineering. I'm the structural engineer who helped out to make sure all the components that were able to be reused were reused, and what needed to be taken away, taken away.
I'm Nicole Hayes with Damage Control.
I'm Tyson Smith. I'm one of the owners of Damage Control. And really, a lot of the credit on this project goes to Nicole. She brought this to us, and from the get-go, it was just a no-brainer to get involved and help out. So we were grateful for the opportunity. And, and really, Nicole was the one that headed this up and, and got us involved. So thank you, Nicole, and thank you, Rolfe, for the opportunity.
I'm Derek Bradshaw with Damage Control, and Tyson pretty much summed it up.
Victor Peterson with VIP Homes. Actually, it's not what I knew, right? It's who I knew. Had a lot of subcontractors who we'd given a lot of money to over the years, who I thought really might want to get involved in this. So we're glad that some of them did, and we're grateful to have been a part of it in a small way.
Eddie Cook, I'm representing on behalf of St. Mary Magdalene Church. And as I approach Father Will and his staff and their community, they were so gracious in supporting this project and very excited.
And John Lewis, I showed up to try and, and help, but the, the group, they were amazing. And so, on behalf of the community, thank you. And as we gather for a picture, those who are here in council chambers, please join me in giving them a big round of applause. Let's make sure, did, okay, all pictures taken. Thank you. Again, you may resume that great service that you provide. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
As I return to my seat, Town Manager Patrick Banger, there's something that just happened. No, has to do with a triple A. Can you take just a minute on this night of celebration for great things happening and tell the community what that means?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, if Hocken Johansson is actually here with us this evening? Is Hocken here? No? I'll tell you what, Mayor, if I could ask our budget director, Kelly Fost, to walk us through that?
Thank you, Mayor Town Manager. We did have great, exciting news. We are working on a bond refunding, which is our opportunity to save on interest rates with the markets going down and having great interest rates right now. With that, we go to agencies and ask for a rating, which shows the stability of the town financially. And triple A is the highest rating that you can get. We received that from Standard and Poor's for our utility bonds, which is very unusual. It's more common to see that for your general obligations. And so, we are very, very excited. There's only two other municipalities in the state that our financial advisor is aware of that have this on utility. So we are part of an elite group, and it's getting more and more elite as time goes on and the world starts to recognize the great fiscal sustainability that we have here in Gilbert.
So in other words, high-performing government, this is Gilbert. Big round of applause. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the communication from citizens. Vice Mayor Taylor, what request do we have tonight?
Mayor, we do have a couple of requests. I, I see two so far.
Okay, please.
I'd like to call forward Bill Norton first, and then after Bill, Christina Curso. And Mayor, if, if three minutes is okay, we'll invite them to state their name, location of residence, and look to the lights at the front of the podium for your cues.
Mayor Lewis, and council members, it's great to be here. My name's Bill Norton, and I live at 1689 East Trade Wind in Gilbert. Love Gilbert. I just came here today to reminisce with some of you a little bit. Had some great experiences with some of you over the years, and wanted to just remember a few things. Back in 2007, myself, Councilman Taylor, and Dwayne Farnsworth ran for Town Council. At that time, we talked about how there were some financial problems, some fiscal problems, and that if we, if there was ever an economic downturn, the town would be in trouble. We were laughed at, and we didn't win. And in fact, there was a particular member of the council at the time, you know, we talked about founding principles and things during that election. And there's a particular member that was on the council who actually mentioned, from the dais, that, well, because we put out these principles from the founders and the citizens rejected them, that they didn't need to follow those principles. Well, what ended up happening a short time after that was economic downturn, as you all know, and we found ourselves in a pretty tough spot. And so, the council proposed a few tax increases, which a number of citizens disagreed with. In fact, the Citizens Budget Committee that was formed had disagreed with that. And a number of you, five out of the seven of you, actually, six out of the seven of you, participated in you, participated in building this culture of fiscal responsibility. And Mayor Lewis, you and Councilmember Daniels were on the council at the time and talked about how tax increases should be a last resort, and how we shouldn't turn to the taxpayers unless we absolutely need to, and that the money was there. And sure enough, the money was there. The threat was that we would lose public safety. We would actually have, we'd lose at least, what, 67 police officers and 29 firefighters. That did not take place. In fact, we went from 17th safest in the country to, within a year, fifth safest in the country. I think now we're second, is that correct? And so, we did some great things. We built a culture of fiscal responsibility in Gilbert. And so, I just wanted to come here to remind us all of that great relationship that the citizens had with members of the council and those citizens that became members of the council afterward, that we built this great culture of fiscal responsibility, and that I'm starting to see signs that we might be kind of getting comfortable with that and going back to some fiscal irresponsibility with increased budgets, pending property tax increases, other projects, public money's going to private things. And so, I just want to remind us all that we are in the position that we're in right now with the AAA rating and things like that because we created that culture of fiscal responsibility, and I hope we can continue to see the importance of that so that in the next economic downturn, we don't have the problems that we faced in the last one. Thank you, Mayor.
My name is Christina Curso, and my family and I have been residents here in Gilbert for nine years. The last time I came before you, about a month ago, I made some comments on the idea of the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center. Since that time, we've seen a federal government overstep their bounds and threaten the financial stability of our public schools by threatening the removal of federal funding if they didn't comply with their ridiculous bathroom mandate. And we have learned through the unfortunate and disappointing news from St. Xavier University Administration, the nonprofits are not always stable enough to fulfill their intended mission for funding or for other reasons. You made it clear that in November, we will be speaking about the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center again and discussing that. And so, I encourage all seven of you tonight to really think about the federal grant fundings and the strings that will be attached or could be attached, especially in the way of zoning. I don't think we need to venture into another relationship, whether it be a partnership, landlordship, whatever it happens to be, with nonprofits, no matter how solvent they may be. It really doesn't need to be considered when there are nonprofits in our town serving the same needs of our citizens. Again, these nonprofits may just need help getting the word out that they exist. I would submit to you that it's not the role of government to try and provide everything and anything, but to stay focused and in your lane so that of what you're responsible to do, and encourage and support the rest of us, nonprofits, businesses, families, to stay in our lane and do what we're called to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor, any other requests?
None, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar, and as it says on the agenda, the items on the consent calendar may be approved by a single motion unless removed to the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Vice Mayor Taylor, what request do we have on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have no request at this time for, to pull any of the items.
I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items four through 18 on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda and in the public documents. Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven of the vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing, items 19 through 27. And to give me a feel for items the council may want to have discussed, and then I'll check with Vice Mayor Taylor in just a moment as to citizens' requests. Let me turn to my right, and Councilmember Peterson, Daniels, Vice Mayor Taylor, do you have some particular ones you'd like to have discussed?
I'm sure 20 will be discussed, but 25 is another one for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels? Okay. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Maybe you can come back to me.
Okay. Councilmember Ray? Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Cook? Okay.
Mayor, we'll move forward at that. I'll see if...
Okay. And to Vice Mayor Taylor, what request do we have from citizens to speak?
Mayor, item 20, there's two requests. 23, there's a request if necessary, 24, and then 28.
Thank you. That would tell me that 19, 21, 22, 26, and 27, we don't have council members that wish to have presentations, and we don't have citizens that wish to speak. And so, I will open the public hearing on those items, and that is 19, 21, 22, 26, and 27, and I will close the public hearing on those same items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve those items. Second.
Second, okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven of the vote. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 20, and I open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 20. And to our Town Attorney, did you have any comments you wanted to make to give an overview?
Mayor, member of the council, this is an application for a liquor license for sushi brokers in the Heritage District, which is opposed by the Gilbert Police Department. I would suggest a hearing whereby you permit perhaps the applicant to speak first and then the department to respond.
Thank you.
Of course, the council is free to put a limit on the time of the presentation, whatever the mayor feels appropriate. Perhaps five minutes for each side would be appropriate.
Thank you. Who will be speaking related to the town?
I believe the Vice Mayor may have a card. I see Commander Pete Smith.
Okay, thank you. So, we will start first with the Agenda Item 20, and invite the applicant to come forward and give an overview, please.
Mayor, is three minutes okay?
So, our Town Attorney has suggested, as you've looked at this, you recommend in five, so why don't we stick with five?
Thank you, Mayor. Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix. Is that five minutes for me and five minutes for the other speaker?
It would be together. So, you could do three minutes, two minutes, or two and a half minutes, whatever you'd like to do.
All right. This is going to be very challenging to cover in a short period of time. I ask you to focus. What we're here to discuss this evening is whether sushi brokers, who is locating in your Heritage District, should have a liquor license. Sushi Brokers has two other stores, one in Scottsdale and one in Phoenix. The things that are complained about in the police report all have taken place several years ago, and since then, which I think is terribly instructive, since then, Sushi Broker has been approved for licenses in both of their locations. Importantly, Phoenix has never had been a problem, and also importantly, the city of Scottsdale, which is the police department that unfortunately Mr. Miller has had problems with, which my colleague will talk about in just a moment. The city of Scottsdale, with a negative police report, overrode that report and recommended approval to the Liquor Board, and the Liquor Board approved. So, what you have this evening is an applicant that has two licenses, both have been approved, both of which are in good standing, and both of which are not causing any problems anywhere. Secondly, the focus should be on what this individual did. Is his behavior, behavior that causes a problem operating a liquor license at a restaurant? Obviously not. Both restaurants function well, there are no problems, and there haven't been any problems. And the Liquor Board has heard all of this that the police department has given you in their report and still approved both liquor licenses. I rest my case primarily on the fact that the city of Scottsdale, where the incidents took place primarily, overrode the police department recommendation and on the consent agenda, approved the liquor license. I'd like to turn the balance of the time over to Dennis Wollencheck, who handled these cases before the board.
Thank you. Members of council, my name is Dennis Wollencheck, and I'm at the firm of Wollencheck &amp; Bartonis. Basically, what we have here is the board, in sort of an unprecedented move, did away with even the initial recommendation to it of two years probation, and completely called us back in and wiped that out completely, and said that it's obvious that Mr. Miller has not had problems in all that time with the Scottsdale Police Department. These incidents, these disorderly conduct incidents, I have to say quickly, arose years ago out of basically a prior administration of the Scottsdale Police Department that's not there. I personally met with the Chief of Police, the current Chief of Police, with Mr. Miller. I can tell you that the meeting went very, very well. The Chief of Police essentially, I'll avow, essentially apologized for the conduct of his force, because what they did was harass Mr. Miller. They had phony traffic stops right in front of his restaurant to cause him to come out and basically be upset. The board, and I have the transcript with me, I realize we have short time here, the board was, in my judgment, as an attorney of 38 years, aghast at the conduct of the Scottsdale Police Department. So, I'm here to reserve whatever time I can to respond to anything about Mr. Miller's conduct. He was tackled in the first incident on the way into his restaurant when he was told to go back inside, and they arrested him for disorderly conduct. He was then, on a year anniversary of the first incident, a year to the day, they came back in, sat around, and basically, for no reason at all, arrested him. He wasn't doing anything but sitting at a table in his restaurant. The facts are very simple, simply this, and I'm not trying to advocate, these are facts that were found. Very clearly, there were no liquor violations of any kind at either his restaurants that he operated in Phoenix previous to this or in Scottsdale. No liquor violations, notwithstanding that they tried any way they could to find a liquor violation at the time, and they couldn't. They had to arrest him on this purported disorderly conduct. And as I said, the board was stuck with a record from the Office of Administrative Hearings, and they said, basically, look, we understand what went on, but we're constrained because there is this disorderly conduct charge. And then it went up to the board, and the board said, we're constrained because the Office of Administrative Hearings found that, so we're going to do away with any probation, and he paid a small fine. That was it. I have reason to believe, if I can just conclude, I have reason to believe that the Liquor Board has nothing at this point against Mr. Miller and has every intention, I hope, to approve him, but I believe that this council should not in any way take hearsay testimony from the police department, with all the respect to them, about his conduct. And I'm here to answer any questions you wish about the details of any of that, and I know with the time, you know, I apologize if I went over, but I would like to address any concern that they raise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commander Smith, please.
Mayor Lewis and council, Pete Smith, Commander with the Gilbert Police Department. The reason that some of that sounds nonsensical is because frankly, it is. The Gilbert Police Department recommends not approving this application based on their failure, Mr. Miller's failure to comply with ARS 4203, which says, and I'll read it for you, "A spiritus liquor license shall be issued only after satisfactory showing of the capability, qualifications, and reliability of the applicant, and that the public convenience requires that the best interest of the community will be substantially served by the issuance." And it's our claim that Mr. Miller is an incapable, unqualified, and unreliable applicant, and that granting him a liquor license would not be in the best interest of the citizens of Gilbert for two overarching reasons. The first is that his application itself is, at best, misleading, at best. And second, Mr. Miller has an extensive criminal history. So, as to the misleading of his application itself, question 15 in the application requires a signed statement that includes the complete details of any, and I'm quoting here, cited, arrested, indicted, or summoned into court within the past five years regardless of the disposition. And what Mr. Miller failed to do, what he did do is give the full details of a single incident, and there were three other incidences that he did not, that he did not give additional details on. And in fact, in two of the incidents, he submitted letters from his attorney that made it appear as if they were still being under review because they were originally appealed. This is true, however, since that time, the Maricopa County Superior Court has ruled that those appeals were not upheld. Mr. Miller failed to report that he had been arrested for possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia. Mr. Miller alleged that he avoided a license suspension as a result of a DUI conviction. Our investigation revealed his driver's license status is, in fact, currently revoked until December. Mr. Miller asserted that he has a lawsuit against the Scottsdale Police for injury suffered in one of these incidents that was mentioned. Our investigation reveals there is, in fact, no lawsuit. Question 17 of the application asks if any entity in which an applicant has held ownership has been an officer, member, director, or manager, has been rejected, denied, revoked, suspended, or fined in the last 10 years. Mr. Miller marked no to that answer. Our investigation revealed that Sushi Brokers paid a $500 fine in 2013 for a violation. In 2012, was assessed a $4,500 fine that was later reduced, and in 2015, the result of a compliance case as well. As far as his criminal history, it says in there that this is a sworn document referring to the application that he completed, and that an extensive investigation of your background will be conducted. It says that plainly on the application. False or incomplete answers could result in criminal prosecution, and the denial or the subsequent revocation of a license or permit. The applicant has the following criminal background. He was arrested in January of 13 for threatening and intimidating, disorderly conduct, two counts, harassment, failure to obey a police officer, two counts, refusal to provide truthful name, unlawful consumption of liquor by licensee, disorderly conduct by an employee. He was ultimately found guilty in the Scottsdale City Court, not the police department, the City Court on Disorderly Conduct, failure to obey, and refusal to provide truthful name. He appealed that, and the ruling was upheld by the Maricopa County Superior Court. In December of 2013, he was arrested for DUI, for driving with an alcohol concentration of .08 or above, for DUI drugs, for possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia. He was found guilty in Scottsdale City Court of three DUI charges, and upon appealing again, the ruling was upheld by the Maricopa County Superior Court. Additionally, in January of 14, he was arrested for assault, disorderly conduct, failure to obey a police officer, failure to comply with a court order, and resisting arrest. He was found guilty in the Scottsdale City Court for disorderly conduct, failure to obey a police officer, and resisting arrest. The one case that he did disclose was the warrant arrest that was later quashed, that was later dismissed. So, generally, for these reasons here, we believe that his misleading in the application itself and for the extensive criminal history that he has, it's really not, does not comport with what we value here in the town of Gilbert.
Thank you. To our Town Attorney, if you could remind the council, there are three decisions that we could consider, and then for both the council and the public, if you... we could consider, and then for both the council and the public, if you could describe the process again, that this is not the final voting body, that we're simply making a recommendation, please.
Mayor, Members of the Council. The state statutes provide in ARS Section 4-201, "The governing body of a city or town shall enter an order recommending approval or disapproval within 60 days of the application, and shall file a certified copy of the order with the Director," and that would be the State Liquor Board. "If the recommendation is for disapproval, a statement of specific reasons containing a summary of the testimony or other evidence supporting the recommendation for disapproval shall be attached to the order." And so consequently, the, if the vote is to disapprove the application or recommendation disapproval, specific statements of the evidence relied upon need to be part of the motion.
Let me just, give us the three, there are three options, we could approve, deny, or?
Mayor, Members of the Council, although it's not set forth in the statute, it would not be contrary to law if the council so felt or concluded to refer the matter to the State Liquor Board without a recommendation.
Okay, so we have those three options. Okay. Let me first turn to the council and see if there are some comments. Councilmember Ray?
Mayor, I have, I have a question first, if that's okay?
Please.
For the, the attorneys for the applicant. You guys talked briefly about the applicant's history a little bit. Can you tell us about the application, the police officer, the sergeant, commander, excuse me? Talked a lot about the application and some concerns that perhaps it wasn't accurate. Can you guys address that portion, please?
Yes, let me take a stab at that. The application had as an attachment to it the consent order, okay? Now, he didn't spell out in the actual application some of the things that the officer pointed out, but on the other hand, he didn't try to hide them because every one of those things, with one exception, which was minor, $500 fine of an employee, but all the other things were talked about and specifically referenced in the consent order, and the consent order was attached to the application. So, the information was there, the applicant didn't try to hide it, it was all contained in the consent order.
Anything else on that?
I can, I'm happy to give some comments. I know there's other councilmembers who want to ask questions, it sounds like, so I-
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor, we received a letter via email from Mr. Gilbert, and there's one sentence here that causes me grave concern. It asks, in the application, which you reference here, if the entity has had a liquor application or license, denied, revoked, or fined during the past 10 years, and the applicant marked "no." However, through our investigation, or the PD's investigation, they found that there was a fine, albeit, in your words, minor, but still a fine nonetheless. Are you telling me that's not falsified information, if he marked "no" and yes, in fact, there had been a fine?
The, he did mark "no," and he overlooked a $500 fine for one of his employees. That was the extent of it. Everything else was talked about and disclosed in the consent order.
He has two attorneys on staff. I would imagine that one of you reviewed this application before it came in and verified the accuracy of the information that he was providing, knowing that this was a sworn statement.
I can, I can tell you that neither attorney reviewed that. It's, we typically don't review those applications, they're pretty standard, and they're basically the same application that he used and that were approved in two other municipalities.
So, in both other municipalities, he marked "yes," that he had been fined, when in fact-
I can, I can tell you that, but basically, he filled out the same form. I didn't go check and see on the Scottsdale and the-
Phoenix.
Phoenix form.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, just a second, there was a, Councilmember Cook, and then you'll go next.
I have a question for Commander Smith. It says, "If you answer yes to any of the questions 15 through 19, you must attach a signed statement, give complete details, including dates, agencies involved, and depositions." In our packet, I did not see that attachment. Do you have it with you by chance, so I can take a look at it?
The attachment of-
The, the, the questions from 15 through 19 that the applicant had to fill out and submit, is that?
I have the, a packet, a copy of the packet.
Is that something that I could read while?
Absolutely. May, may I comment on the consent order? Is that appropriate?
What would be appropriate to our town attorney? It sounds like that would be if there's clarification he needs to give, but also to answer the question. Is that correct?
Mayor, Members of the Council, that's correct.
Okay, please.
Mayor and Members of the Council, to be clear, the consent order that the attorneys behind me are referencing was not provided by them. Officer Harris, who provided, who conducted the actual background investigation of this license, got that herself by filing a Freedom of Information Act request from the Liquor Board, and she, our Police Department is the one that obtained the consent order. So, what it is that they're relying on was actually not provided by them, so that what you received in your packet was provided by us. They'll be happy, Councilman Cook, to provide a copy of the packet.
Thank you. Councilmember Victor Peterson?
Just a quick follow-up on that. In our packet, we have a copy of the consent order. I'm sorry, what was his name, this officer here? Smith, Commander Smith. Our packet does have the consent order. Are you saying that that was something you guys found and added later, but no, was not included in their application?
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, because we do have a copy of it in our packet, so that was-
We provided that.
Okay, but that's what was confusing about that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hamlin, Mike, is it legally appropriate for us, based on the way the law is written related to these licenses, to consider the, the personal integrity of the applicant in our considerations?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilman Peterson, yes, it is.
I ask because I'm hearing an argument that if we just look at the way their business is run and related to that, regardless of other things, that should be our sole focus, but you're saying we can consider personal integrity and all those things as well?
You can consider anything. Mayor, Victor, Councilman Peterson, you can consider anything, you can consider, that you may deem relevant, that is not illegal to consider. Things that would be illegal to consider would be the race or nationality of the applicant, of course, but the, the standard is whether this is in the best interest of the community. So, anything that you feel is relevant to that concern is appropriate.
Okay, I have a question for Paul Gilbert, and I forgot the other attorney's name. I'm sorry, I'm horrible at that, but I've heard arguments, and I understand the arguments that charges related to the adversarial interactions with law enforcement were provoked. Okay, while I'm not saying I accept those as explanations or excuses for those related guilty charges, I want to set those aside for just a moment and ask, what is the argument to explain or excuse the three DUI convictions that were upheld by the Maricopa County Superior Court?
I don't know about the Maricopa County Superior Court upholding DUI convictions, I'm not aware of that. What I believe was being referenced, Mr. Peterson, was that the two disorderly conduct charges, which formed the basis of the Office of Administrative Hearings matter that I was involved in, those were appealed to the Superior Court, the normal course of business. The Superior Court didn't have any legal basis to overturn the Scottsdale City Court's judgment on that. Those, again, and I want to be clear on this before I'm done, those all, and so does this consent order, all relate to the same incidents that I was referring to, where the Scottsdale Police Department clearly, not even closely, clearly, set this man up by having phony stops to disrupt his business. He would go out and ask them to stop, and they would continue to do it, and that's what forms the basis of this alleged disorderly conduct. When they came in his restaurant, they simply just arrested him for disorderly conduct. He went to Scottsdale City Court, I did not represent him there, and he was convicted by the judge of disorderly conduct based on the testimony of those same police officers.
I understand all that. I'm trying to put that part of it aside and address the three DUI charges that he was convicted of by the Scottsdale City Court on April 15, 2015, and then that ruling was upheld by the Maricopa County Superior Court upon appeal on December 4, 2015.
I, let me just start by saying, I was not involved in any of the DUI matters or their appeal, so I can't speak directly in answer to your question, in all honesty.
Is there any counter evidence to, to-
What I can say is-
To those?
Yes. Based on my personal involvement in the matters that I was involved in, involving these issues with the Scottsdale Police Department, including the meeting with the Chief of Police, as I, as I indicated earlier, because we were considering a lawsuit against the Scottsdale Police for their continuous harassment of this man. What they would do is wait for him to leave, and then stop him in his car as soon as he got out, and charge him with DUI or possession of marijuana in the car. That's what I understand the facts of that to be. Again, part of the same series of incidents, which have now stopped years ago, years ago. And that issue has been resolved years ago, okay, with the Scottsdale PD.
All right, I understand all that part. Thank you very much. That's why I was trying to put that aside for a second, but thank you.
To the council, I wanted to come back and check with Vice Mayor Taylor. Do we have some citizens that wish to speak on 20?
No, the two cards were as part of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. All right, other councilmember comments? All right, let me, Councilmember Ray, you had a, I mean, to move forward, do you have some feelings?
Mayor, this is, it, it's a hard one for a number of reasons. So, it appears that Mr. Miller's had some troubles, and maybe that's an understatement. He's apparently made some, some poor choices. They were all some time ago. The thing that's hard for me is that the city of Scottsdale, where it appears that most, if not all, of this has happened, approved the liquor license. Now, is Gilbert the same as Scottsdale? No, we're much better. But, so that's a little bit of a hard one for me, because the, the community where he is, where he's had his problems, have approved it. So, I, I have a hard time saying someone's made mistakes, potentially a lot of mistakes, and can never do good again. I, I'm somewhat inclined to give no, not weigh in on it, not make it approved or not approved, and just pass on the liquor license board, and they're gonna follow the rules that they follow and decide. So, that's kind of where I stand, but it's, it's a, it's a difficult one.
I'll just comment, and we'll have other comments. The study session, and this is where I did want information, and I, and I have had a lot of discussion on this the last few days, is that, and I guess I'm judging Mr. Miller, that it would cause the council to have discomfort, and especially with the police report. This is a new business to Gilbert though. And, and so that's probably a similar feeling, that I wouldn't feel good about approval, but I also, on behalf of the business, would want them to be welcome, and knowing that it's highly likely that the request will probably be approved by the State Liquor Board anyway, because, as you said, Scottsdale, Phoenix, their operations are going well, but the, no recommendation, let me just clarify that, and we're gonna have other comments. So, no recommendation to our town attorney is, is something that implies to a State Liquor Board that we did not feel good about approval, we maybe had some concerns. Would they note that? Would that still be something that would cause them to take a hard look at, at the application?
Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm not familiar enough with the Liquor Board's processes to know how they would respond to that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Since I was turning my left, Councilmember Cook, Councilmember-
Mayor? I can provide a little bit of information-
Please.
From, I'm sorry, Leslie Giltner, Customer Service Manager here at the Town of Gilbert, and part of the state statute does say, "If the recommendation is for disapproval of an application, the Board," meaning the Liquor Board, "shall hold a hearing. If the city, town, or county recommends approval of the license or makes no recommendation, the Director may cancel the hearing." That would be the Director of the Liquor Board. So, if we, if the council votes for disapproval, there definitely would be a hearing at the Liquor Board where our information would be presented to them. If it's a dis, I'm sorry, if it's approval or no recommendation, that it is, it is up to the Liquor Board as to how they proceed.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Councilmember Cook?
Commander Smith, were you able to find those documents that you can share with me?
Councilmember Cook, Mayor and Councilmember, I did find the documents, however, I was reminded that they're not redacted, so I'm unable to, there, there is-
So, you know, obviously, I'm trying to compare your claims to what I see here in our packet, and I'm not sure how to navigate. Can you share with me how I could come up with some decision with what you just shared with me?
Yes, I would be happy to be able to provide the information that, in print, for you, but I don't, I could sit in the back with a marker for a while.
Mike, help me navigate through this, because there's obviously some information that Commander Smith is indicating, and I can't even see the data.
Mayor, Councilman Cook, you should consider the matters you had before you, as well as the oral testimony, and give it the weight you deem appropriate. And so you have written records before you, you have arguments before you, you have answers to questions before you, and that's the basis, that's the evidence you have and the, and the basis by which you must make your decision.
Do you have a feel for what decision you've reached, or you, is that causing you a concern?
Well, I mean, I, I believe that I do want the state to have the hearing. Let, let them take care of it. If we don't deny it, then that hearing won't, won't happen. So, I'm all in favor of denial, so that they can have a hearing, a public hearing, the attorneys can present, I'm assuming maybe the town might even have representation as to what our evidence is. So, I, I would like the state to have the hearing.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, that's a good point that Councilmember Cook just brought up. Would somebody from the Town of Gilbert be at the Liquor Board hearing if this goes forward to them? Yes, I'm seeing heads, nod.
Can I just say, this has all been heard at the Department of Liquor just recently, that's why I'm here.
This particular license has already been heard?
No, all of the issues that underlie this-
Every single one.
That, that cannot possibly be true, because he answered "no" on a question that had a yes, that should have been a yes answer, which had, which was, "Have you been fined?" That is not, that was not answered, that has not been discussed or heard at the Liquor Board.
That's correct.
Mayor Lewis, I'm sorry for interrupting Bridget.
No, that's fine.
I, I truthfully feel like we've heard plenty at this point, and, and while I appreciate the efforts, and we do want to welcome a new business to town, we want you to be successful here, but the hearing needs to take place at the State Liquor Board. Mayor Lewis, I'm ready to move forward with a motion.
May I just make a quick comment?
I appreciate very much the, the information that's been provided today, but the fact, just solely on the fact that the answer in a sworn statement should have been yes, and it was no on our, on our paperwork, that's, with that alone, set aside all of the legal problems, set aside any conflict with Scottsdale Police Department. And if I could, just as a statement, make a recommendation that Mr. Miller and Gilbert PD sit down, and when all of this is over, have a great conversation to start building a relationship there, because I think you'll find that our Gilbert Police Department wants to be supportive of our local businesses, and I think you'll find a different relationship in Gilbert than you might have found elsewhere. So, I, I feel strongly about that as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, we-
Last comment, please.
Are happy to go on the record to stipulate that we will request and demand a hearing if you, before the State Liquor Board. So, if that's the reason that you feel that you have to give a recommendation of denial in order to effectuate a hearing, we can stipulate, and so do on the record, that we will demand a hearing before the State Liquor Board. So, that needn't be an excuse to not-
And I think the comment that was read, a no recommendation does not guarantee that, but you're saying that if a no recommendation were the decision, that you would request that there still is a hearing, and would that for sure happen?
Yes, we, we, we will- Yes. We will absolutely stipulate, and if we request the hearing before the liquor board, they will grant the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, members of council, that may be a matter of practice, but the statute gives the decision of whether or not to have a hearing entirely in the view of the director with a, if the approval from the council is either yes or no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And I think Councilmember Daniels, we probably are ready, although, Councilmember Victor Peterson, you have your hand up, so.
Oh, no, I actually, I totally agree with Councilmember Daniels on this. I was a little more on the fence before I realized that that ordering consent was not provided by the applicant. Now that I know it wasn't, I feel very much that we need to recommend denial. And I think that's the only way to guarantee that there's a hearing, even though they're offering to request one, we can't guarantee that the director will have one. So anyway, I think that's the right course. I'm ready to make a motion if-
Okay. I'll need to close the public hearing first. I thank you for coming and thank you for all the information. I, to Councilmember Ray, it sounded like we were similar, some of the challenges where we want to welcome the new business, and it does sound like the council will probably weigh towards the disapproval, but all, to the council, if I'm voting no, it is not to approve. And so I understand the feelings and thank you for the discussion. I close the public hearing on agenda item 20, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend to the liquor board that denial, move for denial, recommend denial of the application based on the multiple, first of all, providing false information on an application, multiple disorderly conduct convictions, and also three DUI charges that have been resulted in conviction and been upheld by the Superior Court.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. I think that's approved with a six-one vote. Thank you. And Councilmember Daniels, thank you for that strong statement. We want this new business to be successful, and we'll encourage some future dialogue and hope that occurs. Councilmember Peterson?
I just also want to close that for me, I have to look at what the law tells us our responsibility is, and we're supposed to see satisfactory showing of capability qualifications and reliability. Regardless of how I feel about the law, that's what it says. I think based on the hearing and the facts, we can't give that satisfactory evidence or recommendation based on that evidence at this point.
Thank you. I open the public hearing on agenda item 23, and Vice Mayor Taylor, there were some requests, but I will have town staff give a quick overview. How many requests were there?
Mayor, there's one, and it's just if necessary, it's in support of it.
Okay. Why don't we, I think from, let me just check in with the council. We, so I opened the public hearing on 23, and in the study session, I did ask the question if there were any concerns, and we didn't have any on Tuesday. Do we have any tonight? Okay, I close the public hearing on agenda item 23, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 23A and 23B.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven vote. Thank you. Agenda item 24, we had a citizen that wished to speak. Is that correct, Vice Mayor Taylor?
Mayor, this is also is one in support and only if necessary.
Okay. Similar on Tuesday at the, well, let me open the public hearing on agenda item 24. On Tuesday, the study session, we didn't seem to have any concerns with it. Is there any dialogue you would like tonight as a council? Okay, I close the public hearing on agenda item 24, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 24 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, I, let me close the public hearing on 24 in case I didn't. And do we need to do a motion second again? I neglected to close the public hearing before I accepted the motion second. Do we need to close the public, I've now closed the public hearing on that particular agenda. Do we need to have a motion and a second again?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 24 as presented.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. That's a six-one approval vote. I look to 25. Vice Mayor Taylor, do we have some citizens that wish to speak on 25?
Mayor, I have no cards on 25.
And there was a council member that wished to make a comment. Is that right? Okay. I open the public hearing on agenda item 25. Councilmember Victor Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was reviewing the resolution for this acquisition, and I just, I have some concerns, and it can be revised, and maybe it's no big deal, but I think for the integrity of our resolution, it should probably be able to be said with a straight face. I'll give you three concerns. And if anyone can explain it, great, but I don't know how we can explain that the continued growth and development of the town of Gilbert requires the acquisition of this parcel. Can anyone do that? Because that's in the resolution.
So we've opened the public hearing on 25, and we did have a discussion on this, and so Town Attorney Hamblin, if you could give a quick review of that for the public to hear too.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This particular parcel, County Assessor's Parcel Number 30411148, is the Lot 14 of the Hearn Edition, which is on Vaughn Street immediately behind the parking, immediately east of what used to be known as Steel Dreams. It is the final parcel of an L-shaped lot that is part of discussions with an RFP process that went out from the town several months ago. This, the purchase of, the purchase of this lot will make that, will square off that piece of property and enable us to do what we've been instructed to do with regards to the properties within the Hearn Edition. The initial whereas provision written by special counsel indicates that the continued growth and development of the town of Gilbert requires the acquisition of certain real property. It might be more specific to say that whereas the continued growth and development of the Heritage District in the town of Gilbert requires the acquisition of certain real property. But I do believe that the acquisition of this property is consistent with the council's expressed desires to consolidate lots for development purposes for the continued success of our Heritage District.
Please.
Thank you. And I understand all of that, and I agree with the last statement you said, that it's consistent with prior council policy decisions and direction. I'm not debating that. I'm just saying that if we don't buy this property, even yes, if we revise it to be specific to the Heritage District, the Heritage District would still continue to grow and develop. Certainly, it will still happen, even if we don't buy this piece of property. So I still disagree with that statement. I don't think it's true. I think it's hard to say it with a straight face. There's another part of the resolution, I think, that is problematic. We talk about the acquisitions, the next one, finds the acquisition of the property described as necessary for public purposes. Well, I guess if we want to be broad and say public purposes and give us a blank check, that's fine. But to be clear, we don't have any specific identified use yet. There's ideas about possibilities, but there is no specific use yet. And so in general, yeah, we can think of all kinds of things to do with it, so maybe that's fine. My last concern, the last resolution says that this resolution is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of the town of Gilbert. If we don't buy this property, we're going to have a risk to our public peace, health, and safety. I, I'm sorry, I don't see that at all. And so I know that that clause is used to create emergencies so we can buy things quicker or act more quickly, but I don't think it's justified in this case. And so I don't know if there's others that agree, but I will probably try and move to amend, even though I don't support the acquisition of this property. We're also going to be paying 4% above market value for it. Again, we don't have a specific use in mind. I think we are, again, doing a little bit of gambling with public dollars by doing that anyway, because you buy, you have to sell, or we own, and there's always risks with these kinds of things, and we don't even have a specific use in mind. Anyway, I'll stop rambling, but just, I will probably make some motions to amend.
Kind of Attorney Hamblin, I better confirm, as we were looking at a diagram of the L-shaped, there's a little piece of parcel, there was a tiny parcel. Is this that tiny parcel we're talking about?
Mayor, members of the council, it is that tiny parcel immediately east of what used to be the storage lot behind Steel Dreams.
And I think Councilmember Peterson has some good points related to the verbiage that is described. The piece of property, some better descriptions might be that as the town is looking to sell the L-shaped property, it would be a challenge if we didn't get this tiny piece of property of what could happen there. In other words, for both in trying to continue the interest in the L-shaped, if all of a sudden there's this small piece of property that is just out there and not part of the larger parcel, I, that was the way that I took it, is that we needed to make sure that we had the entire area, and then it would make sense to talk to others about purchasing that property. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
If, as a council, we said we'd like to have town staff put some new words to it that would possibly be more applicable, is there a problem if we delayed this a couple of weeks?
Mayor, member of the council, the, as you know, interest in the Heritage District for land is heightened, but it does appear that we have secured this property. At the time that this resolution was written by special counsel, there may have been concern that other parties may be interested, and although that interest may still be the case, the, I think we perhaps, I believe we've gotten far enough along to accomplish or to have, although, you know, we, to secure what we need to there. So with regards to the emergency clause, that it may not be essential. And in fact, if two members of the council vote against it with regards to the emergency clause, it will not happen in any event because it requires a three-fourths vote or a six out of seven council member vote for the emergency clause. With regards to amending the resolution, I would rather, well, my preference would be that we do so now by adding the phrase, the words, whereas the continued growth and development of the, and these would be the added words, Heritage District in the town of Gilbert requires the acquisition. I think that would address many of Councilman Peterson's concerns.
Thank you. And for the citizens here in council chambers and watching, Mark put his pen, and I just, and maybe, Mark, you could help use the pen to show, it's a small parcel, okay, right there, so it's not a very large piece, and really what we're saying is that to just leave a little tiny parcel dangling does not make sense, and so we need to bring it together. And that seems to make business sense now, whether the cost is a concern or not, but I think the transaction, we want to make sure it's all together. The wording, let's start with that. To Councilmember Peterson, the wording that the town attorney just proposed, does that help?
I think, and I don't say this to be insulting, but I think if you added the words in order to more directly control the growth and development of the Heritage District, I think we would be good. But I think it's kind of the height of arrogance to think and to say that without us doing things down there, nothing's going to happen. People own property, they're going to sell it, they're going to develop it, they have property rights, things are going to happen with or without us. And so I still think it's a stretch, but I appreciate all the time you've already spent on it, and, you know, if I get some changes at all, I think that's great, but I still have concerns.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, what I just heard from Mike is that we can remove the emergency clause on this, still accomplish our purpose. And for the overall vision of downtown Gilbert, there actually is a specific and intended purpose for this acquisition because it will be assembled with the rest of the piece and all sold together, which increases the value of the overall site, being that now we have added availability for parking and other things. So this is not a long-term plan for the town to own this and to own dirt as we may have done over the past 30 years, but there is a short-term plan to assemble these parcels as we have in the past and then sell them. And so I agree with you, if we can remove the emergency clause, and if that's legal, I completely can agree with that. But I do believe that there is an overall purpose and vision for this, and I would urge us to move forward with this tonight, Mayor, because we are still in negotiations with the RFP awarded company, and those negotiations will be changing, and the dynamics will be changing, and they are on a timeframe with us because of the way that RFP was written and awarded. So I do think there is some urgency, but if we can move forward without an emergency clause, it does fit into the overall plan.
Vice Mayor Taylor, did you have a comment?
Well, I guess I just wanted to maybe just echo, I'd like to move forward tonight with the emergency. I don't want to restate everything Councilmember Daniel said or you said, but Councilmember Peterson is making some good points. Let's find some wording, and let's see if we can move forward tonight. That seems to be practical. I think we can get this done.
And so to Councilmember Peterson, some of the verbiage, again, can we go like this and bring them together, and we're there?
Mayor, I think I've made my position clear. Anyway, I appreciate all the accommodation. I won't be voting for it, so whatever amendments you're open to are great. Thank you.
Okay. So to bring closure, we're close. Town Attorney Hamblin, anything else that you could put as far as verbiage that would help us in getting ready to vote?
Mayor, members of the council, on the first whereas, right before the word town of Gilbert at the end of that line, just add the words Heritage District in the, and that would be more precise. And if Councilman Peterson has any other suggested language, we can include that as well.
Any other suggestions?
I'm sorry to say this, but one last little comment. I think the fact that we had the emergency clause proves the fact that it can grow and develop without us. In fact, we're worried that it might, and that's why we were trying to hurry so much to make sure if somebody doesn't do something other than what we think should happen with it. So, yeah, I think that language is fine. I'm sorry for that last comment. I just, it just blowing my mind a little bit here.
Thank you. I close the public hearing on agenda item 25, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, I move, just sorry, just to clarify, Mike, we can just remove the emergency clause altogether from that statement?
Yes, you could make a motion, Councilwoman Daniels, to exclude the emergency clause and amend it in any other way you see fit.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the acquisition of property in the Heritage District located at 14 Eastern Way, removing the emergency clause and authoring the mayor to execute the required documents, and approve the use of economic development reserve contingency in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Mayor, Councilwoman Daniels, there was an error in an earlier addition of the council communication. It's actually not 14 Eastern Way, it's Lot 14 of the Hearn Edition.
So moved.
Lot 14.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a six-one vote. To our town attorney, town clerk, Vice Mayor Taylor, quality advisors to me, I believe we have completed public hearing items 19 through 27. Do you agree? Okay, thank you. Town Attorney Hamblin, I might just have you make a statement because this happens once a year. We're about to recess a regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting, and why do we do that?
Mayor, members of the council, because of Arizona State Statute with regard to the adoption of the budget, it requires that a separate meeting, a special hearing be held, and in a, excuse me, just one moment, Mayor. And that it be held in the context of a special meeting. Hence, the state statute requires that you recess the regular meeting and convene a special meeting for agenda item 28.
And to do that, do we need a motion and a second?
The, no.
So the mayor can just say, we now recess the regular meeting and convene in a special meeting?
Correct.
Thank you. And also for clarification, this is not in the section of public hearing, but to Vice Mayor Taylor, we do have some requests to speak on 28. Is that correct?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay. Okay. Which we will happily do. So, we will first hear from our town staff on Agenda Item 28, this is the budget, and we have had our preliminary budget discussion, and now this is to consider the adoption of the final budget, please.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Kelly Fost, Budget Director, I have just a quick presentation on the final budget that's before you tonight. Our objectives are this evening we'll be having a public input and final adoption of the budget. We have had a change with additional consideration with legal, it's been noted that we will need a public hearing on the secondary property tax, and it needs to be 14 days before the August 9th meeting where action would be taken. The meeting in July is only 12 days before, and so we would look to June 23rd to have a public hearing on that item, so you'll be noting that change in the upcoming meetings.
Mayor, members of the council, it is, is required that that meeting be held at least 14 days before, so the fact that we're holding it six weeks before is entirely appropriate.
Thank you.
In the comparison between the preliminary budget, which you've seen before, and the final budget, there is really only one difference, and, or one material difference, and it's the moving of a funding source of Water Project 062. And we'll still be using system development fees, but we'll just be using bond funding instead, and then it'll help with the intergenerational equity with using the existing fees to pay down some of the older debt that we have in association with the refunding that we're doing that was approved tonight. In the study session, there were some requests for additional information, so on the shade structures in fiscal 16, so the current year, we have seven playgrounds that have been replaced with either full shade or integrated shade. With community partnership and funding, we were able to do six new shade structures to the Freestone Park picnic areas, and one canopy at the Cosmo Parks, we have added some additional shade there. For fiscal 17, within the budget before you, there are two playgrounds that are planatively replaced, and those will also add either full shade or integrated shade into them, and we will continue to work to add shade to the playground structures as we move forward, and look for more community partnership opportunities to add additional shade in other parks as well.
Before, can, can you go back, so to Vice Mayor Taylor, in the study session on Tuesday, just want to look to you, and especially with your Parks and Rec liaison assignment, any comments you'd like to make?
Mayor, I don't want to speak for Eddie Cook, but those of us with good-looking haircuts appreciate all the shade we can get in the town.
Do you want to speak for yourself on that one?
Well, I think we should make these parks, you know, hoverboard-friendly, it was, and where, as I wear my hat, because that's really something important to me, so.
Thank you. All right, please continue.
Thank you. There was also a question about police staffing, and Commander Smith was happy to provide me some information, so it's both an art and a science on the staffing side. The police department does use a math-based staffing software, it looks at workload statistics to determine the officers that are needed for the desired service and response times. They also have an art side of that, they go and look at that, the results of the math software, and they look to see if they can use any civilian positions to address some of the workload, i.e., or for example, the traffic collisions. And so they try and use civilian workload, which is typically less expensive than our uniformed officers wherever they can, and then the result is that the police department has looked at that data and looked at alternatives and come up with that, we still need additional uniformed officers on the streets, which is what you're seeing in the budget presented, there are eight patrol officers and two sergeants that are proposed. As you know, we have a grueling budget process that lasts all year long, and from the budget packages that are received by the executive team and reviewed, there was about 13% that was cut out before it was taken and put into the budget that you see here, so there is a lot that's taken out. This is already after the departments do their own vetting process before they put budget packages forward to the executive team for approval. They have to vet their business case and prove that there's truly a need, and then, even then, not everything will make it through to what you have tonight. Some basic information about historical, this is looking at our Gilbert budget, trying to look at the ongoing, Councilmember Peterson, a nod to you, this isn't perfect data, we do our best to put information together, but obviously, town budgets grow and shrink over time, and population also doesn't grow in an exact uniform line. If we add some trend lines here, you can see what the overall look would be for this snapshot of time. Again, the trend lines would make a difference depending on the snapshot of time that you look at. Also, that would change as we are getting better at putting our ongoing operations, taking them out of one time and putting them into our ongoing budgets, on what you're seeing more in the later years, especially in our IT departments. But it is a good look to show you that we are trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can, we continue to benchmark against other cities within the valley and our peer communities nationwide, to make sure that we're providing the best service for the, the cost to our citizens, and we keep that in the forefront of our mind. Are there any questions?
Any questions at this point? Councilmember Cook?
I just asked Patrick if staff could email us this presentation as we discuss this, there's some things on there that I'd like to review during our discussion.
Thank you. Looks like he's working on it right now. Okay, other questions or comments at this point? And to Vice Mayor Taylor, did we have, well, we had the one citizen who wished to speak.
Yes, Mayor, just the one.
This is probably a good time to do that.
Okay. I'd like to call forward Christina Curso. Thank you for being here, if you state your name, location, and residence, and look to the lights for three minutes, is that okay, Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, because I thought the public hearing was tonight, it was listed that way on the website, so that's why I chose to wait for this, so thank you for hearing, letting me talk. My name is Christina Curso, and I'm a resident of Gilbert, and I'd like to address one thing, one section of the budget, and that is the funding of nonprofits with our Gilbert tax dollars. For a number of years, I ran a decent-sized nonprofit, and our budget was about $700,000 a year, and we did that on private, strictly private donations. Many times, people gave us more money when they knew that we didn't receive tax dollars. So there's four tax credits in the state of Arizona whereby taxpayers can designate their tax dollars to public schools, private schools, foster care organizations, and charitable organizations, which are nonprofits, 501(c)(3), we can all participate as citizens in all four tax credits every year. The charitable tax credit now allows individuals to give $400 a year, and married couples to give $800 a year, and that's a dollar-for-dollar tax credit, right off their taxes. It used to be $200 and $400, but the state legislature and the governor signed a new, new law just three weeks ago, doubling that, so now it's 400 and 800. You could be encouraging our citizens to give in this way, because it would substantially help, sorry, sorry, I hit the button there, it would substantially help every nonprofit in Gilbert. Maybe the Gilbert digital team could do an effective PSA that we could use annually over and over again, that would be more effective than the $437,000 you're choosing to give nonprofits through the budget before you. With the tax credit in mind, it would only take 547 married citizens to fund what you're giving, only 547. We could do a lot better for our nonprofits. I thank you for finding value in our town's nonprofits, serving the marginalized and underserved is absolutely essential. But don't let us off the hook, we should be giving as citizens, and if you stay in your lane and focus on government, and encourage us to participate in this way, you could help raise more money for nonprofits than we could ever imagine, because they are worthy and very important part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, some great suggestions. To the council, let me start with Councilmember Cook, as, I don't know if you've received that yet, but do you have any, related to the budget, do you have any comments you would like to make?
No, I'm going to wait till I get those, that presentation.
Okay. Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Not just.
Councilmember Jordan Ray? Vice Mayor Taylor?
Mayor, yeah, I do.
Please.
Couple things, so, one of the, well, budgets mean priorities, right? Budget is an expression of an organization's priority, and so, we, we've had discussions in the past, the last time, and I'm going to ask to bring up, oh, look at that. Is, so we're getting a handout, can we get this on the projector? Yeah, it's probably the same one. That's my copy. It'll, it'll be up there, thank you. I printed one, because I wanted to talk to it. So, well, there's, first off, Mayor, let me just say, there's a lot of great work in this, and there's a lot of great things in this, but there's still some things that are, that are things that I think, when we look at a macro perspective, and what the priority and how it expresses, you know, we've seen this before, right? We have the loaf of bread there, right? That's the, what that's doing is that's saying, how much is our Gilbert residents paying for just regular services, right? Healthcare is skyrocketing on them, right? Food is getting more expensive, but you aggregate the basket of good in the CPI, right? There's different indexes we can check. Do we, do we as a council want to take more as a proportion of the household incomes? My answer to that is no, this budget says yes, and, and this graph shows that, those are all numbers validated by staff. And, so that's, that's a big issue, because a budget is, is an expression of a priority, right? And so me, as a, as one person, a priority is that we're actually living up to the things that we say, in that we're a high-performing organization, and that we're efficient, right? And this is telling us that we're less and less efficient. So that's, that's a big issue. It's another thing that, in terms of priorities, we have a big park coming up in South Gilbert, and there's going to be a lot of discussions about how to pay for that. I mean, it's not small, it's going to cost a lot of money, and there's really some good thinking in terms of how we potentially fund that, but we're not giving ourselves as many options when we're using more and more of our operational funds to fund things like headcount, and I'll get to that here in just a second. I think it's, I think it's a better expression for the town and our priorities to continue to save, when we know something big is, is coming forward, and debt or bonds might be coming forward, right? We also approved a big bond that, that is going to be moving forward, right? That, you know, can we, in times of good, this is when we save up for things like Parks and Rec, right? The nice-to-haves in a community, right? And so I think as an expression of a priority quality, and being able to, you know, put as much down on principle, and saving for a rainy day, right? Things like that, in the seven years of that is when we pack it away or improve some infrastructure, and there's some streets that have been neglected, and I think we need to put a little bit more priority in some of those things. And this binds our hands a little bit, okay? So I think that's something that I think we need to take seriously. The other, and the big driver in, in a budget is always labor, right? And so I've, I've never shied away from talking about, you know, what, what labor is. So let me just refer, as we all have seen in the packet, the new position summary, I think we've all seen that, and kind of looked at that, the one page that we were provided, right? So by and large, Mayor, I'm supportive of a lot of these. The public safety, we talked a little bit about on Tuesday with the, the pilot program, the police positions, I think those are good. But here's a couple things that caught my eye as I, as I was doing my research on this, and I just wanted to share with council. Maybe you share this concern, maybe you don't. Let's take the first one there, the social media specialist. We're proposing to open a position for a social media specialist, someone that would tweet, Facebook, create YouTube clips, right? At a base salary of about $74,670, fully loaded, that would cost taxpayers $105,604, right? That's what the chart's saying from staff. So, you're looking at a burden rate, a burden rate in a business is, is like the overhead on top of the base salary, right? And that's about 40% on that particular position. So I wanted to see what the street offered for a comparable position, and so salary.com and the HR industry is a very credible tool to benchmark compensation. Certainly, there's nothing precise, and even the compensation study that's going on right now isn't precise either, but that's a very credible, companies like Manpower, massive global staffing organizations use this every day to understand things. So what they, what they say the street value of this position is, is $56,000, right, versus 74. So we have about a $20,000 delta just in the base, and then in the private industry, the burden rate on top is between 20 and 30%, right? We're pushing 40%, and actually higher if you look at the total here, and I'll get to that in just a second. So then you look at the number of people we already have in that, the number of people that we already have, and, and don't get me wrong, Communications Department here is unbelievably effective, but it's comparable to a $30 billion organization in terms of number of FTE, and that's something we need to understand. So that's one thing. Another one here is the recruiting analyst, let's look at that, how does that compare to the street? An analyst is typically lower than a manager, right? It's a staff-level position, right? And so we're proposing to bring someone in at $79,770, with a 40%, you know, burden rate, right, on top of that, $111,000 total. On salary.com, a street-level comparison, that would cost a private business about $60,000, so about $20,000 less, and then of course, a 20, 30% burden on top of that. So anyways, there's a number of things in here, like a planner, right? We have a planner here, during.
Vice Mayor Taylor, let me just, and this will help with the general question, as the budget was presented, because I know this is helpful information, it's getting into details, I was actually hoping that this was the detail we would have gotten on Tuesday, so it's a little bit hard tonight, all of a sudden, try and make changes when it's just coming, but if you were to summarize what your recommendation is for the total budget, do you have, when you bring it all together in the positions, because I know this is your expertise is, is HR, and so this is great information, but I, I think at a general level, do you have a summarized number that you would say, this is what I would feel comfortable with?
For the budget? Well, I don't know that I have the number, but whatever tracks to, you know, the line to get us back on course is, and I'm not sure if that number's been generated or not, but maybe Kelly knows what that is, I think it's between 14 and 20 million, because, see, we've gone three years off track on that. And Mayor, I, you know, even though this is additional detail, and this is certainly the meeting to do that in, I expressed that we have a lot of overhead in this, in the prior meeting, and said that, you know, we'll, we'll bring forward, you know, some information on this.
Sure.
So I guess I can cut it short here and say, listen, there's a lot of overhead, it's extremely higher than what we have on the street, the data's there. Let me just talk about the revenue side. The revenue side is a little bit aspirational, if you look at it. You know, the economists are saying that we're not out of the woods, right? The Fed had a chance to raise rates, and they really need to raise rates. And, you know, the revenue line is based on two things that I think we need to have a lot of caution on. Number one is the sales tax rates, if you look at their increases year over year, are, this one is much higher, it's about 5 million, whereas we've been between 1 and 3 and 1/2 million in terms of, you know, sales tax increases year over year, and we're, we're saying, well, this, next year we're going to get about 5. Maybe, I, I'd like to think we would, I think that's great, I think that's maybe a little aspirational. The other thing, with low interest rates, it makes our construction sales tax artificially high, right? Because cost of capital is so low. So I guess, I mean, who knows what it's actually going to be, Mayor, right? It's, it's something that we just have to be warned on, so I guess, you know, just taking your lead, this is all data that's been there, I started the conversation, you know, a month ago, and, you know, I, I know at the time, there wasn't really any interest, it was really just, let's get it done. And the, the other thing, there was a promise that we would be looking at this, there really wasn't as much analysis in it, so I offered that up, I appreciate the time, I'm going to.
And let me just go back and summarize, so on the, the expense side, if it were lowered 14 to 20, 14 million to 20 million, you'd be more comfortable. On the revenue side, do you have some numbers that you're more comfortable with?
You know, just looking at the trend, I think if we stay with what the revenue projection is this year, which actually went up, I think it was 3 and 1/2. is this year, which actually went up, I think it was three and a half. I've got a table. I think it was three and a half. Excuse me, it's 4.6 million is what's projected, assuming that this year's projections go up. So, we're not off by much, but about a half a million, a little bit higher, but--
Thank you. And I also, back to expertise you've had in the past, I think you had four positions you had concerns with. And have you had any dialogue yet with HR?
No, I've mostly talked with Kelly--
Okay.
--at this point. And one of the things that I asked for early, early on was a lot of the justifications on the positions. I did get them today about 4:30. So, that was part of the delay as well and getting some information here, so.
Just to our town leadership, this is fair concerns, and there's four positions that I'd love to have some more dialogue on and just to the reasonableness. And I know we're doing our studies, and that will help look at these four positions too. But is that something we can ask our town staff to follow up on with some more detailed information from Vice Mayor Taylor? And I realize we need to come back and aggregate it, but that's a detailed discussion that would be nice to have occur.
Mayor, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So, Vice Mayor Taylor, anything else related to the budget?
Thank you for the time, Mayor.
Somewhat in response to Councilman Taylor's comments, I do want to say thank you to town staff for being so willing to discuss these things. And whether it's the particular position that was discussed in the social media, after hearing from Dana on this, there was a lot of good reason, I thought, for that person. It wasn't simply a social media specialist. They have to give it a title, but there's a lot more to it. And I appreciate staff taking the time and being willing to discuss these things for the last number of months. And so, I, it's a little bit difficult for me to sit up here and hear changes last minute when we've had tons of time to talk about this. And I get that this is an appropriate meeting to discuss the budget, but I, it's hard for me to hear, we should change this one little thing here, here. I really wish this would have been discussed when we could sit at a study session and really talk about it and pencil out numbers. It makes it very difficult from the dais to pick at the different positions. And it's, I guess I'm just expressing a little bit of frustration that this wasn't discussed about a long time ago.
Please.
Mayor, so, we had, I've expressed the frustration with the disparity in our comp scales and benefit packages when we originally had the benefit and comp plan, right? The benefit side of that equation was not even expressed, right? It was me bringing it up, saying, hey, we're way over market. The document had this oblique line saying we're competitive, but it wasn't even out there, right? So, as of 2013, we started this discussion, okay? And so, having it come forward, why are we so far off? You know, I don't want to have to say it every single time, but, you know, and then the second thing is, we did talk about overhead. We have talked about this. So, it's not as if this is the first time we've been hearing the discussion. I'm just going to repeat it. I guess I'll just leave one last point is, I did, over the last couple of years, bring specifics through, and I understand this is staff's recommendation. And so, the data that I had put forward before was acknowledged, accepted, but nothing was ever done with it. So, you know, I give Councilmember Ray credit, yes. I could probably have done it a little bit earlier, but I know what it's been done in the past, and I know we've already been talking about this for about three years. And to your point, I'm hoping that we can get that corrected in this upcoming. I think they hired a great consultant in Mercer to do that, so I'm looking forward to that, Mayor.
Thank you. And I, just to bring two comments together, part of the strategy is, in a set time period, we do an HR study of every job position. And Vice Mayor Taylor has four comments, if I was looking at your piece of paper correctly, related to new positions, that I would like town staff to have some dialogue with Vice Mayor Taylor and look at that and compare notes. And that will be helpful. And then, we'll continue the strategy on the set time periods of looking at all the job positions, evaluating. We did have a strategy as a council to be, describe it in kind of the mid-range, not too high, not too low. And I realize you take every position, sometimes they're going to vary, but in general, we were kind of in the mid-range. And some positions, and that's why the timeliness of this next study is important, because some positions were now falling behind, and we're starting to lose some of our staff to neighboring communities. And so, we have to have that strategic discussion again. I'll just say this, and to Vice Mayor Taylor, this is not, because I do not know on that first position you described, but by accident, and this goes back to our strategy to create a digital communication team that has provided tremendous benefit in so many ways, as you said. And we take in the last two weeks, and it was a fun video, that it was by accident in many ways that we decided to respond to a challenge from a well-known music singer and to have reached now about half a million views there seeing Gilbert. There's just something interesting about trying to put that into dollar figures, and it's hard to do, and yet, those in the industry do. And that right there is probably worth several million dollars' worth of marketing for Gilbert. So, there's, and I'm not saying that position is therefore justified with that comment. I'm just saying, the strategy that the, our town manager put in place to put in a digital team has been quite impressive to see the return on investment. But I just use that globally, and I do want to have those positions discussed because this is an expert, that's his background, and so, I would like to have those compared.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, we're happy to discuss all the positions. And just to use that one as an example, we go through a pretty exhaustive process in really vetting every position that we bring forward from each of our departments in regards to the justification, the value to our residents, and keeping that, that end goal of providing service to our residents to drive the decisions we make. But just to highlight a discussion point on that one, the video that was done two weeks ago was a very quick, easy thing for us to do, really highlighted all the wonderful citizens and some of the businesses in our community, and did provide for some incredible exposure for the town of Gilbert on a national basis to let people know what a special place we have, which helps when it comes to marketing and attracting businesses as well as residents. But for social media in general, and why that is being engaged in both the public and private sector, and the public sector probably being behind the private sector in those efforts is because the way in which we are getting information in our society is changing fundamentally. It's going from newspapers and magazines and mailers to online platforms such as Facebook, such as Twitter. Even the news being delivered online now more than in print, and we've talked about it. But I would bet if we were to do a study, we would find that Facebook users in our community outnumber AZ Central subscribers by probably a 10 to 20 to 30 to one margin. And so, for us to be effective in getting information to our residents and from our residents, we have to be where they are, and that's where they are, and that's why we engage social media. It's also much cheaper and much more effective than the old ways in which we did that, such as mailers to our residents. A mailer to a resident in Gilbert right now costs $40,000 for one mailer. So, every time we wanted to inform someone about our perks program or inform somebody about something that's going on in our community, that's a $40,000 hit to our budget. Where social media outside of the cost of the personnel and some basic access to the web and computer technology is pennies on the dollar. So, that's why we've embraced it. That's why we've engaged it. That's the majority of the work that goes on 99% of the time so that we can get the information our residents need about road closures, about accidents, about issues, about special events going on to them in a manner in which they want to receive it.
And I better jump back. I listened to myself saying, we did that by accident. It was an opportunity that I think, if the only purpose was to unify the community in a very short amount of time, and so strategically, we made that decision. But then, the outcome, I think, is what we weren't really anticipating. I probably have had 10 mayors come to me and say, who did that? As if we spent thousands and thousands of dollars in this professional team, and I've been with great pride saying, our team did that, and we did it in 24 hours, and now they want our team to go do their video productions. And I've kindly said, no. Okay. And before I get to Councilmember Peterson, I was going in this order, so Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. So, there are several things that I just wanted to point out about this budget, and I will be brief and efficient in my comments. This budget reflects no increase in utility rates. We have neighboring municipalities who utilize a practice that allows them to increase utility rates and then transfer those dollars to the general fund to supplement other activities. We do not do that in the town of Gilbert. Our enterprise funds are self-sustaining. That means that what you pay for water is what it costs to deliver water to you, and that is a very important practice. So, this budget reflects no increase in utility rates. This reiterates a policy that we put in place, a financial policy, not quite some time ago, actually, now, where construction sales tax revenues, which we consider to be one-time revenues, are utilized for one-time expenses. That is a best practice. That ensures that in the long-term sustainability of the town of Gilbert, we are being financially-minded. I do agree that revenues have increased, and it's reflected in this budget, but don't forget, we engaged in a census this last year that increased our population. That gives us a bigger share of the pie when it comes to state shared revenues. And so, the numbers that you see here are reflective of that increase in population in addition to what that increase in population does to sales tax revenues. So, let's, we have to really look at this comprehensively. It's directly tied to an activity. Our proposed budget tonight is $850,494,630. That's a big number. No doubt about it, that is a big number. It is an increase of $235,485,410 from last fiscal year. But you must listen to the detail. We have a CIP carryforward in that amount of $98 million. Every year, we have a CIP carryforward amount. That's our capital improvement plan. That's used for construction within the town. That's roads. That's park improvements, anything that you find within our capital improvement plan document. So, we have $98 million of carryforward, which is not just leftover money, but projects that are still in process or under construction. Those dollars have to be carried forward to the next fiscal year in order for us to be able to pay those bills when they come due. We have a $100 million placeholder. This is a large placeholder for the 2007 Water Resource Municipal Property Corporation bond refunding and the capital expenses for the Sandtown Water and Greenfield plant expansions. These plant expansions are necessary for growth, and, again, another example of us being very fiscally-minded, we share those costs with some of our neighboring communities because we pooled our resources and realized that it's best to serve our residents in a joint project. So, this also includes, this budget, this big number that we've all seen, also contains an extra $100 million of contingency budget for our capital improvement program. When we ask for flexibility, you heard Councilmember Taylor tonight ask for additional shade structures, for example. We've also had conversations, which I fully support, which includes trail improvements, things that aren't currently now being funded in next fiscal year through our CIP plan. But we need the ability to be able to move and reprioritize some of these projects into a next fiscal year, and that is what that contingency amount is for. I can give you a great example. Several years ago, we determined that Higley and Baseline needed to be improved immediately. We were having Banner Gateway, MD Anderson being built on the north side of Baseline Road. Immediately, the council, we looked at that single lane, entered into a development agreement with the southeast property owner, and because there was a contingency fund available to us, we were able to utilize those dollars to be able to act quickly to create improvements to what I would consider to be one of the major corridors, leads to the 60 in the town of Gilbert. So, that flexibility of those dollars is incredibly important for us to be able to react. Do I fully expect that that $298 million, that's what we consider to be those three items that I stated here, do I expect all of those dollars to be spent next year? No. There will be carryforward. We may not use any of that contingency. We may use 10% of that contingency. I don't know today, but because of this budget, because of the way that it's built, because of all of the ownership that we have, both from the staff level, the council level, and the community, we now have the flexibility that we need to be able to react to circumstances that might occur within the town of Gilbert. So, Mayor, that was a long-winded response, but I felt like some of that detail was really important. Yes, this is a big number. We are very cognizant of the fact that this is a big number. And I do believe that through smart financial planning, through the financial policies that we have in place, through the teamwork that exists with all of our department directors, all the way down to the supervisory and the rank-and-file employees in the town of Gilbert, this requires our buy-in to be able to accomplish the purposes that the town has set forward that our residents expect from us. I very much appreciate the chart that you provided here. I've seen it before. I think a couple of years in a row, we've seen this chart. But I don't have any supporting documentation to tell me exactly what these numbers are representing, and so, I'm sure that you've done your due diligence in your research, but I don't know if it includes those three items that I've just listed or others. I don't know if this is just general fund or not, but without any supporting documentation, I just don't really even know what I'm looking at right now. So, with that, Mayor, I do recommend approval of this budget tonight.
Councilmember Victor Peterson?
Mayor, just to jump right into her question, no, this does not include any of the CIP, which doesn't include any of the CIP contingency. And as far as other contingency, it doesn't include that either. So, all the big numbers that she talked about that we may not spend are not in my chart. And so, that's why this data is so strong and so powerful, is that we're removing anything that could be considered an outlier. We're truly talking about ongoing costs here. These are things that we have every reason to believe will continue next year and the year after, and once you get to a new threshold, you're going to at least stay at that threshold or increase. It's going to be really hard to cut without, you know, cutting off staff and all kinds of horrible decisions none of us want to deal with. So, this is why I use this chart, is, and furthermore, I just comment, the blue line is actual spending, okay? The gray one is budgeted. And so, you can see both, because I know there's a concern about, well, sometimes we budget and we don't spend. Sometimes, you know, these things don't match. But either way, we've got trends that I think are, at least if you start from fiscal year about '13, since that year, and I think that was the last time I approved a budget, but that, if you start from that year and that trend since then, it doesn't, no index that I know of is going to support that slope. And so, that, you know, that's really my concern. And just a couple of other responses to some other comments, real briefly. We talk about, we shouldn't make last-minute discussions and points. I will just say, from somebody who's trying to make changes to the budget at all, it doesn't seem to matter when they're brought up. When we talk about these things, a preliminary budget, the general consensus is, this is preliminary, we're going to keep talking about it, and there's going to be adjustment before final. And then, if you bring it up at final, it's last minute, and we can't make changes. So, I understand the frustration on the other side, but, you know, from my perspective, it's challenging too. And one other comment about the social media and all the other things, these are really nice things. I enjoy them. They're entertaining. And if there's an ROI, it's wonderful. Exactly what that looks like, I don't know yet. Hopefully, that means we can afford not to raise taxes, and I'll jump right into that, my main concern tonight. Oh, I do want to talk about nonrecurring costs, because Councilmember Daniels also brought this up. Our packet does say that we applied the nonrecurring level of construction-related revenues toward nonrecurring costs. It's a good thing we're trying to do that because it's a financial policy we have. But as I asked staff what was in those nonrecurring costs, one of the things was the TOPAZ network, which I was also told recurs every 10 years. So, really, we're not quite even there yet. It's really a stretch to say that if we're going to include things that recur. And so, I'm just saying, that's a challenge, and it gets right at the heart of my concern, that in the long term, I don't know if we're sustainable. I'm concerned that we're not. Based on slopes, I'm really not sure how we can be, to be quite frank. I just don't think you can have these slopes continue and have revenues always follow that. I just don't see it. Now, some of you are thinking, okay, we've seen the slope, we've heard your concern, but give me some concrete evidence of overspending. Well, I'm glad you asked. The best evidence for overspending is the fact that we are including space in the budget for a tax increase. is the fact that we are including space in the budget for a tax increase. Some are going to argue that it's not really a tax increase, because 1.15 is the rate we had for over 10 years. I've heard that argument. But if raising both the total levy and the rate from where it's been the last two years isn't a tax increase, I hope someone will explain to me what is a tax increase. Furthermore, what we do about the fact, what do we do? And this is something I newly learned, and I'm not going to quote exact rates, because staff's still working on it. I'll be fair. But I have concerns from some staff that 1.15 isn't going to be enough either in the long term, based on our capital improvement plan. So, if the rate is, that's proposed in the future, is above 1.15, will it be an increase then? I mean, at what point do we decide it's an increase? The bottom line is that my reason for pushing so hard year after year for reducing our spending is just for this purpose, to prevent a tax increase. And now, we are already headed in that direction. I don't think we can spin ourselves into a tax increase and call ourselves fiscally conservative. Now, it's fair to ask, what I would cut to get us back on track? To give you one single thing would be a challenge, I'll admit. But I will also say, however, in my five years on the council, I've never seen the majority of this council willing to cut a single thing I've proposed to cut. And I've made some very modest proposals. So, while I do have one modest cut to propose tonight, I'm going to ask the rest of the council, what is anyone else willing to cut?
Thank you. Any comments anyone would like to make on that?
I might just give, high level, a couple of thoughts. Tremendous appreciation for Councilmember Peterson, Vice Mayor Taylor. One of the, and Bill mentioned it, the 2009, 2010 year of the Citizen Budget Committee. Those are the, that was the time period where I was most involved in the details and really getting a good feel of down to a very line item, by-line item level view of the budget. And that was the year that we needed to find $14.7 million in order to balance the budget. And that was very helpful. Both of you have done detailed analysis, and that's appreciated. I think what I've seen, and the council's heard me say in past years, is the reasonableness word. And so, I've seen each year that whatever we have had as our final budget, we've always been less than that. And so, I don't know, I mean, I can't just say we're going to be $20 million less and go like that without a plan, but there is a trend that shows that we've done that, and that helps me feel a little bit better. The other thing that, back to the reasonableness that has really been appreciated is when the bond rating agencies came, I was the one that represented the council to meet with them one-on-one. And as if it was an auditor coming and saying how our local municipality has done, they were overwhelmingly complimentary. And they did say we had done an exceptional job in managing expenses and managing revenues. And because of the trends of doing that, we were able to get a AAA bond rating, which I think of the 20, 30,000 cities in the United States, if I recall, there's 179 that have the AAA bond rating. So, that helps me from a reasonableness. And I realize tonight, it sounds like if we were to take out of the expenses 14 to 20 million dollars, if we had revenues go down, maybe half a million, that would help. But I, it's highly likely that that may still happen because of help that comes from you and all council members throughout the year. We get down in the details, and we see things that make sense and the things that don't, and work as a team. And the envy of the greater Phoenix area is the Gilbert Fiscal Responsible Council. And I hear that from so many. And when we take the aggregate of the taxes our citizens pay and compare it to other municipalities, we have a pretty good track record. But that doesn't mean I still don't want to listen and learn, and that's been very helpful. It's just that the details tend to happen throughout the year. It also is an eight-month process, and I hope that, to council members, you still feel like, because I've probably had 15 discussions about the budget, more at a high level, more policy level, and not in the detail level. And I do want us to get in the details if it's appropriate, but it's hard to do. Guess what I'm saying, it's hard to do right now in looking at some of these things without a lot of background information, without additional dialogue. And so, the budget, to me, has been reasonable, and I think will be less again. And if revenues are not intact, that we won't wait a year to make corrections. And some of the positions, we may have to postpone if something happens. And so, the track record of our team has been very impressive. And to get another AAA bond rating with the last few weeks, that is impressive. And so, I'm ready to move forward too. It's not that I don't want to get into those details. It's just at this point, we'll continue to have detailed discussions. And we, the budget is simply set at the cap, but we work as a team to continue to monitor it throughout the year. And so, I anticipate those discussions and that we will have them. Now, let me speak as a total council. I've had now two council members say, let's proceed. Let me turn to my left. Are the three of you ready to proceed, or do you have additional comments? Please.
Well, I just wanted to, again, thank staff very much. I know Kelly and I spent some good time just looking through the data. But I just wanted to share to the public some of the things that may not be necessarily highlighted. So, give an example. You know, last year, when we were here, we approved of our budget to be about 16, excuse me, $615 million. Pretty big jump, because the prior year actual was about $370 million. We project that this year, we're going to be about $336 million. But we adopted a budget of $615 million. Now, I understand that we're going to carry forward, but as you, if you think about what we've done as an organization, I mean, that's $279 million that, you know, in theory, we could have spent. As it relates to the general fund, just give an example. We adopted last year $165 million general fund. The projected is going to be $138 million. That's $26 million approximately that we're not going to spend. So, I know it's hard sometimes when you think about the financials as it relates to forecasting, because to me, it's always about forecast accuracy, and I know we always talk a lot about it. But Mayor, as you said, I think we have been on good track as it relates to being fiscally responsible to a lot of what we have adopted and what the actuals have turned out. And I know, again, last year, we adopted a really big budget, and we're fairly significantly under. And, you know, when I look at even this year, it looks like we're going to be even, you know, it's same, it's almost like the same thing that we've done in the past. We seem to adopt a really big budget, but the actuals, in our history of actuals, have shown that we've actually done very well fiscally with the taxpayer dollars. So, I'm in full agreement to move forward. I know that we were given some information this week about the AAA bond ratings of making some payments on some readjustments. And that's $11 million that's going to be back to the taxpayers that we're going to save. And there's been those events that we've had over the five years that I've been on board. You know, it'd be nice to keep a tally of all the, you know, millions of dollars that we have saved as a fiscal responsible council. So, again, I had good dialogue with the staff. We're on good track. I know we're in an economy that hasn't improved, but we're good.
And to Councilmember Bridget Peterson, excuse me for interrupting you, but about two months ago, and I don't know if our town leadership, or Kelly, you'd be able to answer this without checking the numbers, but it was interesting that in 2008, 2009, if we were to talk about our rainy day fund, it was not very large. And one of the policies we put into place is to have a contingency or a rainy day fund, if that's the right term to use in this case, of so many months. And do you, are you able, do you know what that is? Because two months ago, I asked, and I just don't remember the number, but I knew it was many, many times greater than what it was in 2008 and 2009.
Yes, we worked to have three months of operating, so 25%, plus one year of debt service saved away on the side in case of need. And having these funds available is part of what's brought us to the AAA bond rating. And having the replacement fund set aside in our water and wastewater is also one of the strong indicators that helped us get the AAA for the utility bonds that are going forward.
Part of why I asked that question a couple of months ago that helped me feel better is that I was concerned about some, our projections, we do our best, and sometimes, and we make assumptions, and based on the assumptions, we hope things go well. But if things go awry, we are, there will be challenges, but we're in a much better position, much better position than we were seven, eight years ago. Councilmember Bridget Peterson, I'll try not to interrupt the two of you, to keep going.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my second year being involved with the budget discussion. Last year, I was pretty new and jumped into the zero-based budgeting. And as I've been very honest with people, budgeting isn't my specialty. And I know many of you have that as your background. And I've come to learn through this zero-based budgeting process that this council set forth for our staff to follow. This staff works tooth and nail for months on end to bring forward what they can justify to each other through the process, what they can justify to our town manager and assistant town manager through the process. And as Kelly showed us the slide earlier, that out of 100% of what they asked for, 13% was cut. I know the list of new employees was much larger than it is this evening and has been cut down to what they have all worked down to. And when we try to sit here at this level and cut those positions, and I look at the social media specialist, for example, that the amount of work that the social, that our Gilbert Digital team does, I don't think we could even start to quantify based on the results that they get in the social media world. And we'll use the video as an example, Mayor, that you just talked about, the 500,000 hits and the positive reactions. And I will tell you that, as a sitting council member, I don't get recognized by people, but I walked into the grocery store and was recognized by people because of that video. And that's just a small, little, tiny impact. But I'm saying that it's a very positive thing when you look and Google Gilbert, what are you going to see? You're going to see people that come together and work together. The planner position, for example, now, since I came from the Planning Commission, the Planning Department was cut in half several years ago when the economy went down. And to add one new planner to that department, that I don't even know what the new housing permits are still at this point, that they are working through, their workload is enormous. And it's just an example of what our staff does. Oh, back to the Gilbert Digital. Chief Joe Bush told us at the, at the study session the other night, what an impact that social media and Gilbert Digital had when we had the fire next door at the apartments. That's a perfect example of what they do and how they do it and why they do it for this community. An recruitment analyst, just another item that was brought up this evening. I've talked to Patrick about HR and people applying for jobs and our process, and I'd really like to get a little bit more involved in that and see how we can work with our staff to make that a better, smoother transition for people that are applying here in the town of Gilbert. And I'm hoping that this position will help with that. But my comments on this budget are, and all the numbers have been talked about. I don't think I need to delve into those again, is that our staff works incredibly hard for about eight months to bring the numbers to us that they bring to us. They bring us the least amount that they have worked through in that process, the process that this group has set forward. And I give them so much credit for being able to sit down with each of us individually in the process and working through all of that together. And I will support the budget that they've presented this evening. And I thank them for all of the time, effort, and work that they put into it.
Councilmember Ray.
Much has been said. I will be brief, and I appreciate the comments from council members. And I do appreciate the time that the council puts into this. I am confident that each council member spends significant time on their own and with town staff to talk through these concerns. And I appreciate town staff's willingness to answer probably a lot of really dumb questions, a number of them coming from me. But I appreciate the patience and the willingness to discuss and debate and hear my concerns on this budget. So, over the last number of months, like many council members, I've spent a significant amount of time on this, and I appreciate the efforts of staff to answer my questions, and I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you. To all seven of us, I express appreciation. It is a pleasure to work with this group. It's a group that's highly respectful of each other. And especially to two members that do a great job of digging in details, it's greatly appreciated. And it, and it helps all of us pay attention to different things. And I, I hope, listening to these comments, I hope as we vote, that we are $20 million under on expenses. And it most likely will happen. And I hope on revenue for off, we'll just adjust, and throughout the year, we'll continue to see what's working, what isn't. One of my worries, and when we have had staff in positions, of course, that is a big, high percentage of the general fund is the labor part. We are very lean, and that often is the concern of, we want our team to know they're appreciated, but we don't want them to have so much pressure to get things done that we haven't appropriately balanced out the workload. And I don't get into those levels of detail, but I do ask those questions. And that's why I want to go back with Vice Mayor Taylor. Very much want those four detailed positions to have some more dialogue and... Please continue to note those. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, I do want to thank the council, because we have some disagreements. But I want to agree with you, Mayor. I think we have good discussion regardless of disagreements. I know sometimes it can be frustrating for everyone to try and understand and to communicate. And so, I do need to say that. I am sincerely grateful for that, Mayor, I am. Last comments, I just want to, just last comments. Robert Schules gives me twice to speak on an issue, so. First of all, I just note that there was no answer to my question about a single thing to cut. And I didn't really expect one, but that is a concern for me. I struggle with that. The other thing that I heard about social media is, you know, if I could translate people being able to recognize me on the street into tax dollars saved, I think maybe I could feel more, you know, at ease about the social media position. Wait a minute, I could get re-elected, and I cut taxes. Wait a minute, maybe I should get on board with this. No, I'm kidding. But I'm concerned with that. I think, I think there can be a temptation in that area, that kind of activity, to just, I don't know what the limit would be when we felt like we'd done enough of that kind of thing. Just the actuals real quick, Mayor, because you pointed out the fact that we've had our actuals end below our budget for many years. And you'll see that the gray line, for a long, long time, you were right. It was very much the case, the gray line being the budget and the actuals being the blue line being below. But we've had some years now. That's not always true, at least based on some of the numbers that I've been given. And so, just keep that in mind. One last comment, and I'm done. We talked a lot about our AAA rating. I read that, when we first got that AAA rating, I read the justification for that credit increase. And one of the comments in there, and I think it's significant, is that it said that Gilbert had no immediate plans for issuance of debt. It was right in there. And I thought, you know, that's telling. And now, we're going to be issuing debt, and my argument is that we should issue less debt, because I think that will continue to keep our credit rating in a great position. And so, with that, Mayor, I'm done. I really do appreciate everyone's patience.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one comment, and I want to try to answer Councilmember Peterson's, what would you cut? So, I mean, you remember last year, as I tried to lead our team to remove four categories of privileged sales tax. So, we do make an attempt as a team to remove that, even though it wasn't huge. But we do do that, and we have done that. And, you know, it didn't leave a huge impact as we went into our, this next fiscal year. And I think we'll take another look at it, you know, this coming year. I'll make another effort to spend time with staff to look at the next group of taxes that we can cut. But I do want to let the public know that we did make that as a team, a decision to reduce, again, four categories of sales tax. And I know, Victor, you would be very proud of that, because it's probably one of the first times we have ever done this, in my mind, in the history of the town of Gilbert, to have done that. So, we have done. mind, in the history of the town of Gilbert, to have done that. So we have done that as a team.
And to Councilmember Victor Peterson, because I don't want you to be disappointed in the other six, and this particular year, I've probably had less specifics than prior years. And yet, there have been, it's a process. And so to all of a sudden to say, what would I want to cut tonight? Well, there's been eight months where there've been discussions. And so things have come out, and maybe not for me as many this year, but in prior years. So that's the whole philosophy of the council, I think, is that to be efficient, to look for cuts. And on a night like tonight where you're looking at the big picture, it's hard to just go, let's make a change like that. I want to end by telling our town staff, you are impressive, very impressive. And some of those budget meetings, I've watched team members come out, and that 13%, Kelly, they probably wanted to strangle you. But it's where there's been some very detailed discussions. And it's a culture of our town staff of wanting to be efficient, wanting to use every tax dollar in the most important way to get the most out of what the government in this town is supposed to do and what they provide. It is impressive to me. And so to our town staff, thank you for, again, performing so well. And we'll continue on. And it's an organization that has done some remarkable things. I think the AAA ratings, and then we could list 30 recognition just like that, and there would be even more of what the town of Gilbert has been recognized for. And it's because of our town staff and citizens doing their part, too. And what we do, we do together. So on that note, I will entertain a motion on the agenda item 28, considered adoption of the final budget.
Mayor Lewis, I move that we approve the budget as it's been presented by staff tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Please.
I have three simple motions, and we'll just go through them in order. I just want to warn you, and they won't take long. But they go from the most modest to the least. So I move to amend the budget to rename the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center in the CIP to the Page Park Center renovation.
Is there a second?
Mayor, can I just ask for a little more explanation on what, I know we did talk about that, repurposing that, is that kind of?
Yeah, it's just to reflect the council's desire to not necessarily commit to being a wellness center. I know it's not probably anything binding, it's a small thing. That's why I said it's pretty modest. I'm not sure it's a big deal.
Point of order, are we allowed to amend the CIP based on our budget discussion tonight? We may be able to, but I thought that that was too separate. Oh, you've already asked it.
Mayor, members of the council, the amending the CIP is not on the agenda tonight.
Mayor, I was told by Kelly Fost that we were approving the CIP as part of our vote, and we would not have a separate vote for CIP. So if I'm incorrect, I apologize. He might be right, I'm out of order. But I asked when we were approving CIP, and she said it was combined with our vote tonight.
The, Mayor, members of the council, that is correct in that the CIP projects listed are part of the budget. The question is the funding. And I don't know that the naming is that much of a difference, but I would like to hear what Kelly has to say about it.
Kelly, please.
Mayor, Town Attorney, yes, it was my understanding, we are approving the dollar amounts with the budget tonight because they are part of the overall budget that you are approving. And the detail of those projects is included in there. I would have to defer to the Town Attorney on if the name of the project is appropriate with the budget or not. But we can certainly take it under advisement, even if it's not with the budget, and get that changed if you would so like.
Mayor, for the record, I'm not opposed to that change at all. I just didn't see CIP listed here, and I wanted to-
And I think Town Attorney Hamblin, as you said, it's not really impacting, it may have a symbolic gesture that the council may want to move forward on. I wouldn't have a problem with the name change either, but-
Mayor, members of the council, the vote before you is whether or not to approve the budget as part, and the CIP to make those changes. The council can give direction to the staff to name it whatever we choose, consistent with the town's naming policies.
Councilmember Peterson, hearing that, how would you like to proceed?
I hold my motion, if anyone wants to second it, I don't think it has much impact. I think it's, I did check with staff before to make sure I could do this, talk with Mel and talk with Kelly, even asked Hamblin about the CIP. So I thought we were in line, I hope we are.
Let's just clarify, will we be voting on the CIP at some future date? We have to vote on that document on an annual basis.
Yeah, that document is going to come back to council, correct?
The document that has come previously in council was CIP and IIP, it is an infrastructure improvement plan. It's not technically the infrastructure improvement plan, and there's not a legal requirement for the names and project numbers, the CIP to come back to council. So it would be, we would reflect what's adopted in the budget tonight as moving forward into the printed document.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Mayor, I would, my understanding was that it was just a budget tonight. Kelly and I talked about some numbers in here that are incorrect in the CIP. So like, it says we're going to spend $4.4 million on St. Xavier. I think the actual is 2.4, unless there's new information. So if it's in order, I'll second it. But I don't think it's in order. That's not what I was expecting to do tonight.
Mayor Lewis, can we just request that staff bring forward the CIP at a future meeting, and we can vote on it then, or vote on it as an individual change?
Thank you. We've made that request. I see heads nodding. And so, and Councilmember Peterson, there could be a second, but I haven't heard one yet, so.
It's fine. If it comes back again, I'm happy. That's what I wanted originally, but I was told it wouldn't.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I spent half an hour on the phone trying to figure this out, because I agree with all of you, we've always had the CIP as a separate vote. And that was confusing me as well.
All right, thank you. What was your second item?
Yeah, so I don't even care about it, because it's going to come back. That's great. So with that, motion fails for lack of second. I don't need to say that. But my second amendment, I move to amend the motion to remove the social media specialist from the budget.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. And so should we vote on that, that one? Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, please vote. All right, that motion is not approved. What was your third item?
I move to amend to reduce the budgeted expenditure under the debt service and general obligation debt line from $23,82,250 to $21 million, and also direct staff to transfer $2 million from the general fund to the streets fund. Just so you want to know, what this does is this commits us to a lower, effectively, it's going to commit us to a lower tax rate now. And I know everyone wants to keep their options open. I would rather not keep the option for a tax increase open. So I'm trying to put a stop to it now.
Councilmember Daniels?
It's not that that conversation isn't worth having, because it absolutely is. But we're hearing that on the 23rd of June, is what I heard. And we don't even have final numbers yet. So to commit ourselves to any dollar amount without having the final levy amount given to us, I think that that's a little dangerous. Now, you missed it, but on Tuesday, we were told by Kelly and budget team that they have preserved all options within this budget. That's because we need to have this discussion on the 23rd. We don't have final numbers yet. And so I know you want to commit us to a final number, but we don't have final numbers from staff. And there's still some ongoing dialogue that needs to occur between now and the 23rd. We originally weren't even going to hear that until August 9th. So we just got that update that it'll be sooner rather than later, which is good. But I don't, for the record, Mayor, we don't have final numbers on that yet.
If I can respond-
These are placeholders.
So you're right, but you're already committing to a maximum number, right, tonight, of $23 million. All I did was take $2 million off of that. That's all I proposed. So whatever we're capping ourselves, I'm just removing $2 million from it. So it's, all it does is basically obligates us to use some of our principal for $2 million. That's all I'm trying to do.
But one of your suggestions in your handout that you gave us a few weeks ago was that we utilize general fund dollars to pay down this amount, not the secondary property tax reserve. And so that option, I thought, was still on the table. And if you do this, we have removed that option from our-
That's what this option does, is actually use the general fund. So it moves it from the general fund to the streets fund. It's the same option that I presented previously.
Why would you move it to the streets fund? Help me understand the logic.
Because that's where it needs to be spent, on those projects. That's what the general obligation debt is going to be for, is for streets projects. So it just goes to fund those.
Right, but it's a debt service payment, not a streets fund payment. So streets fund goes to pay for streets. We're paying debt service, not streets.
Right. So it does both things, right? So it gives you the ability to spend $2 million in streets fund that you didn't get from debt. And the other, the other part is going to limit the amount of debt you can borrow to subtract $2 million. That limits the levy.
Clearly, Mayor, we need to have more discussion on this. So sorry, I didn't interrupt your motion, but I just, that's a, I know you're waiting for a second, and that's fine.
Just to be clear, I made the same motion over a month ago. And so the talk for more discussion is fine, and I'm sure we'll get there. But the whole council and staff and everyone else has had, well, however long it's been since we-
Final numbers that I'm waiting on.
All I'm saying is we've had plenty of time to discuss this. And so if it's last minute, I don't think it's my problem, I presented it a month ago.
Well, no, I'm not saying it's last minute. Please don't misunderstand me, Councilmember Peterson. What I'm saying is we don't have final numbers yet in order to make the determination about where money should be moved. You and I haven't had this discussion at all, so you don't actually know if I'm in favor of your proposal or not yet. But what I'm waiting for is final numbers from staff to be able to determine that. And we weren't going to have those final numbers till August 9th. Now we're going to have them even sooner, which I think is great and important. But until we have those final numbers, I'm not sure we can make a determination about what funds money, dollars should be in, in order for us to accomplish our purposes. This fund also, when we pay down debt, saves us millions of dollars in interest payments for our taxpayers, and that is all a factor in this conversation as well, which really isn't supposed to happen until June 23rd. So sorry, I just delved into the conversation.
And to Councilmember Peterson, you did make a motion. And I think Vice Mayor Taylor, you're about to do a second?
Yeah, I just wanted to get it out there so we can vote it up or down.
All right. Let's vote on that motion, please. Okay, that is not approved. And to Councilmember Victor Peterson, did that cover all three things you wanted to do?
It did, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Back to the, and excuse me for forgetting, who made the motion to approve the budget? Was that Councilmember Daniels? And who made the second? Okay, so let's vote on that motion. So this is the original motion.
And the original motion was to approve of the budget.
Okay. That's approved with a 5-2 vote, thank you. We adjourn the special meeting and reconvene in our regular meeting. Administrative items, agenda item 29, any reports on boards, commissions, and committees. I look to my left, I look to my right, and I move to report from town manager on current events.
Mayor Lewis, there was an addendum, there's an item 28A that's under the administrative items.
Thank you. Thank you, I do remember that. And it is a presentation, is that correct? And Dan, I'm going to just ask you real fast, are you the one during the presentation? So a presentation of the proposed public engagement process and composition of heritage district stakeholder working groups for the nine heritage district focus areas over the next 12 to 18 months. So I, oh, Jacob, that's right, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. There's no presentation to go along with this report. We simply wanted to outline the process to give council a better understanding of what the public engagement will look like on the nine focus areas for the Heritage District over the next 12 to 18 months, if there's any-
And I, when I was asking about this, and excuse me, Lisa, for forgetting that I had it up here, there are some meetings coming up within the next couple of weeks, I understand. And so you wanted to also present this to the public, is that right?
Correct. We'd like to ensure that the public knows that we welcome participation in this process, and we will be using all of the town's media channels to try to advertise that and get the word out.
And did you just explain executive summary what it is, or do you need another few sentences to describe what this would be?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So over the next 12 to 18 months, we have the nine focus areas in the Heritage District, looking at various issues and topics that need further discussion, that will then feed into the 2018 redevelopment plan. As part of that process, we will be looking to form stakeholder working groups to be able to gather input, engage them, and obtain feedback from those individuals to help inform this overall process. These stakeholder working groups, we will be advertising and asking folks to fill out a form indicating their interest to participate in the process. And we hope to engage as many members of the public and community stakeholders, industry groups, et cetera, as possible.
Thank you. And so at this point with the council, that was just giving us the input that you'll be sharing with the public. Did you need us to formalize that, or we just needed to be aware?
There is a motion before you.
Okay. Is there a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to approve item 28A as presented by staff.
Second, can I ask a question?
Please.
It's just, we'll keep it moving forward. Is there, are there dedicated sort of seats for various stakeholder groups? Or is it, is it kind of open right now, and we take who we get? Because I want to make sure that we do have, you know, some identified stakeholders that really have a big interest in here. And if we don't get applications from them, make sure they're, they know that this is going on. Can you tell me the composition structure? Is there dedicated, then maybe some general members?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and through you to Councilmember Taylor. We currently have a few different cross-sections identified. We'd like to have one Gilbert resident, one Heritage District business or property owner or manager, one member from a Gilbert Board or Commission, one business leader within the industry or field related to that particular focus area, as well as one Gilbert executive leader in addition to town staff that will be there to support that. How does that sound?
Yeah, that helps. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. And to our town clerk, Lisa, thank you. We now turn to our town manager for current events.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all the staff involved with putting together the budget. It really is a ground-up process involving all levels of the organization. And it actually is practically a year-long process in Gilbert, given the size and the complexity of our operations. And putting that budget together and doing the zero-based budgeting pieces of that is really an entire organizational effort, or as Councilman Cook likes to put, a one-team effort. But I especially would like to extend a thank you tonight to Kelly Fost and her staff of budget analysts who do an excellent job of helping to run this process for us, assemble the numbers, compile the data that we need, because we actually go through a very similar process to what you did tonight in regards to questioning expenditures, questioning requests, examining how this benefits our citizens, and trying to keep them at the forefront, and the outcomes of these actions at the forefront of the decisions that we make, and recommending that budget to you. So special thank you to them, and thank you for the thoughtful discussion on it, and appreciate your support in our efforts.
Thank you. Report from council on current events. Turn to my right, turn to my left. And the council will be so amazed when it says, "Report from the mayor on current events", that I have none. Meeting adjourned.